I'd like to call to order the September 23rd Powhatan County Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Mr. Powers, can you do the pledge allegiance and Mr. Denali, can you do the invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve this incredible community with incredible people. We ask that you would continue to humble us and help us do your work in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Request to postpone agenda items in additions to leases or changes in order presentation.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Denali.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Resolution R. 2024-53 fixing the data center equipment personal property tax to new business item.
Okay. I'll move that to on the agenda to number nine, new business, D.
Mr. Chair.
All in favor of that move? Aye.
Aye.
Goodness, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Chair, I move that we take item F and G, moving them out of consent to uh...
New business?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll put that as nine, A, B, and C, which will be D, F, and G. So it'll be confusing, but we'll get it be in order. Can't get a formal approval of the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County administrator updates?
No updates this evening, Chairman.
Public comment time. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes per group. We have a signing sheet at the back of the room for both public comment periods and for public hearings. As soon as I get my list, I will start public comment.
I'm here to try to validate my belief that the intent, that the intention of the county government and the board supervisors in particular is to fairly translate the will of the Powhatan community policies and actions that achieve the goals of this community. I recognize this is no easy task. There are inevitable questions about what the community really wants and possibly even questions about whether the people know what is good for them. Our form of government is based on, depends on, the premise that the people are perfectly capable of determining what's good for them. To assume otherwise is to demonstrate a level of conceit that destroys faith in government. The county has done the difficult and time-consuming job of developing a comprehensive plan that reflects the will of the people. I personally have faith that the board does not believe it has the authority to breach that plan, not without a significant process aimed at determining if the actual residents have changed their mind about that plan. However, there are currently some signs that are starting to shake my faith. As an example, I point to the Spring Branch project. It is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. It is inconsistent with the residents' desire to keep Powhatan rural, which was an underlying premise in that plan. There are over 1,600 residents who have signed the petition objecting to that project. I would submit to you that approval of this rezoning would be a statement by this board that you intend to simply ignore the comprehensive plan, that you believe that you have the power and the right to do so regardless of the will of the people. I don't believe you want to do that. I don't believe that you want to risk losing all credibility with your constituents. I believe you will fairly evaluate this and other requests consistent with the comprehensive plan and the will of your constituents. Our form of government in the county requires it, your constituents demand it, and I believe that in the end you will prove worthy of our trust. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next up will be, I think, is it Gary Sinson? I can't read it.
Good evening. I'm Lorraine Jones. I live in Page, on Page Road. I'm here tonight to ask each one of y'all to vote no in regards to the data center project. This is not in the best interest for Powhatan County's citizens. I'm sorry, am I interrupting you?
Yeah, no, this is a public comment period. If you want to talk about that, we have a public hearing period for that.
Oh, okay. Well, it is a public comment. I mean, I'm concerned about this and...
Do you want to save your comments for the public hearing part of it?
That's fine. All tell me what to do and I'll be here.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I think that's me.
How you say it?
My name's Snyder. I'm Garrett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I wanted to say after eight years of parochial school, I never once made the penmanship honor roll, and that's, that's further evidence.
Me neither, sir.
That's further evidence of that. But I'll be brief. I wanted to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan only from the standpoint that the comprehensive plan is our blueprint. It's what we should use as our guide to every decision that we make, whether we be the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors. When you begin making exceptions to the plan, you begin to erode the efficacy of that plan. Also, because a project or a proposed project is consistent with the parameters of the plan, that doesn't necessarily mean that that project is a good project for Powhatan Secondly, I've been going to the Planning Commission meetings, to the Board of Supervisors There's talk about what's legal, what isn't legal. Just because something is legal doesn't mean that you should do it. For instance, Constitution gives us freedom of speech. That doesn't mean you go into a crowded auditorium like this and yell fire. So the mere fact that something is legal does not necessarily mean that it's something that we should consider doing. And with that, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Brundage and Mr. Bill Cox will be up after that. If you have comments on a public hearing, just, we're gonna get to that. This is the first public comment period.
Good evening. I'm not sure if this is the right place, but my name is Kathy Brundage, 1938 Woodbury Mill Road. I'm in Mr. Denali's district. I'm here to talk about the density bonus that was talked about at the planning center, planning meeting. I would like you to vote no to this. What this says is that it's going to go from a 20% to 65% as long as 60% is conservation open space, or from 20% to 85% as long as 70% of the site is preserved. This does not change the fact that you are trying to put higher density housing things here in Powhatan. That is not what we want. That is not what the comprehensive plan calls for. I'm going to urge you to vote no on anything that is putting higher density housing in Powhatan County. It doesn't fit what we are, it doesn't fit what we want, and it puts a huge burden on the infrastructure here in Powhatan County. I just came down 60 and the traffic is nuts. And to add even more, houses and that along that 60 corridor would be absolutely crazy. The infrastructure cannot support it. So I'm asking you to follow the plan, to do the will of the people, and to vote no for any of these high-density projects. Thank you very much.
Bill Cox, followed by Dan Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking on behalf of Castlemont Farm, which is an organic farm and a respite for community activism in five minutes' place.
Yes, sir.
The responsibility for the agenda under the BOS bylaws rests with the county administrator, Mr. Shardine, and the chairman of the board, Mr. McClung. As part of tonight's agenda, they included an ordinance establishing a special business property rate for data centers in the consent agenda. A consent agenda is a board meeting practice that groups routine business and reports into one agenda item with no discussion, hardly the place for major change in the county's taxation policy. I wrote the board after the release of the agenda, "You have placed a special personal property tax rate for data centers on the consent agenda for Monday's meeting. I would urge you to remove this item from the consent agenda. The public is interested in hearing a discussion from their elected officials, not a cut and paste from the consultant's report paid for the applicant." You've made that action. Thank you. Now, what are we talking about? Magnum Economics produced a report titled "Powhatan Data Center Campus Economic Impact and Annual Tax Revenue Contribution to Powhatan County." This report was commissioned and paid for by the applicant, and the applicant provided all of the inputs. The tax rate proposal that is shown is what the paid consultant created, not what staff or the BOS has hashed out, at least in public. The Commonwealth of Virginia allows counties to create a separate tax category for data centers for taxation of business personal property. This then allows the governing body to set a different rate for business personal property for data centers versus what a machine shop or a restaurant might pay. Some counties have taken this route, but not all. Loudoun County, Fairfax County, and the city of Virginia Beach have a single business personal property tax rate. Now, let's look at the proposed tax plan. First, why have a reduced tax plan and is there a fairness issue with existing businesses? Loudoun County's data center alley is the home to the world's, the world's largest concentration of data centers, and they charge over $4 per $100 valuation versus the Powhatan proposal of $0.40 per $100 valuation. Our local businesses pay $3.60 per hundred. Where are the staff recommendations? Where's the public discussion and where's the justification? Second, it is not only the tax rate that matters, but also the depreciation schedule. The depreciation schedule determines the value of the property as taxed. The combination of these two is known as the effective tax rate. As an example, Henrico County uses a tax rate of $0.40 per hundred, the same as a Powhatan proposal, but because Henrico uses a different depreciation schedule, the first year effective tax is $0.30 per hundred versus the Powhatan proposal, which has an effective tax rate of $0.20 per hundred. Henrico gets 50% more revenue. Once again, where are the staff recommendations? Where are the other depreciation, other depreciation schedules that you considered? Third, there are two clear industry trends that lower revenue projections. Cost of equipment is decreasing and the lifespan of equipment is going up. Have you factored these realities into your discussion? Fourth, Powhatan does not have a BPAL gross receipts tax as the other jurisdictions do. What is the impact of this? By now, I'm hopeful that you have concluded that there's much that you have not considered. You need more information and you need a workshop devoted to the subject before you can proceed. The alternate is to let the paid consultant, working for the applicant, chart the future of Powhatan's tax policy. Please do the job you were elected to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dan Jones.
Mr. Chairman, my apologies. I walked in and I'm not here to speak for begins. I thought I was signing the President's bill.
No problem, sir. Karen Rizmeyer, followed by Don Rizmeyer.
My name is Karen Rizmeyer, and I no longer feel comfortable giving my address at public meetings. Why? While Mr. Powers was running for Board of Supervisors, my neighbor was speaking at a public meeting about the rezoning of Spring Branch LLC to CC and how she was opposed. Mr. Powers was present at that meeting, and lo and behold, Mr. Powers showed up at my neighbor's door the same week. Is it legal to use someone's address from a public meeting or name to locate them, especially someone running for the Board of Supervisors? She is a grandmother and was home alone, and she was afraid. She did not open the glass door between her and Mr. Powers. She said, she said he told her change was coming and how these businesses and how these businesses were needed to offset the homeowner's tax burden. Very funny, as he doesn't want businesses there now, but high-density residential, which, which is more of a tax burden, but more of a profit for Coonwell LLC. Since my neighbor, who is, who used to attend almost all the meetings, has not showed up to a single meeting since, she told me personally she was afraid to. I did try and convince her to come tonight to tell everyone herself, as I thought that would be more impactful, but she said she was scared. She gave me permission to tell her story. Now we have intimidation, maybe even stalking, maybe even misuse of information at a board supervisor's meeting by Mr. Powers to add to his many unethical behaviors. At our meeting last Monday, several people brought up how it was a shame that one board of supervisors' bad behavior is now casting doubt on all the board of supervisors. As my dad always said, "All it takes is one bad apple to ruin the bunch." Why have none of the ethical complaints against Mr. Powers been addressed? And if they have, why have we had no response? I have asked the news to listen in, hoping this will spur a response from our chairman. Is it okay for Mr. Powers to call Powhatan citizens tyrants who are expressing their opposing views? Tell us we are self-serving and selfish? How about a citizen telling a citizen they have prunes running from every possible, possible orifice of your New Jersey-bread body? Never in 25 years of living in Powhatan have I ever heard a board supervisor stalking to his district or citizens this way. Does the board think we are unintelligent? The odds of, the odds of this happening, the odds of this probably are more than one in a million chance that Mr. Powers' top three donors are all profiting off of this one piece of land, Spring Branch LLC. And yes, Powhatan does have a code of ethics. If you really start to question someone's present behavior, all you need to do is look at their past behavior. If they match, then that really tells you a lot about a person. Mr. Powers has three failed businesses. He has been taken to court three times, two of which he has not, he has, he was a no-show, and two subcontractors were never paid per the FOIA I have in hand, totaling $14,832.18 that they lost because of Mr. Powers. He can no longer hold a contractor's license in the state of Virginia. Do I really want this person making decisions for my district? We, as Powhatan citizens, demand some answers. Thank you very much.
Please refrain from singling out any board members. Speak to the board members as a whole, and don't single them out, please.
My name's Don Rizmeyer, 3523 Richards Run. At the end of the last board meeting, every board member thanked the citizens for speaking their minds except Mr. Powers. He decided to go on record about his personal relationships. As a result, I filed an ethical complaint with the chairman of the board. I've been waiting a little over three weeks for a response. It's another board meeting, so I'm gonna go ahead and try to summarize within three minutes and go on record with the complaint that I made. Number one, Chris Hughes with Balzer led the Spring Branch public meeting. There were 85 people in attendance. He then gave four campaign donations to Mr. Powers totaling $800, which he's acknowledged. And then he was appointed to the EDA, and Chris is the engineer of record for this Spring Branch LLC case, which Mr. Powers is still planning on voting on. Second item, Ms. Winnall, who's on the Planning Commission with Gray Ridge Builders, sold him his house, built him his garage, gave him a $1,000 campaign donation. Then he appointed her to the Planning Commission. She's now recused herself and said that she has a conflict of interest, but Mr. Powers does not believe he has a conflict of interest in this case. Third is Commonwealth Land Management. This took a little research, but they are situated at 5370 Martin Road in Kent Store, Virginia, which is very strange because it's Fluvana County. They donated $500 to his campaign. This is the same principal address, however, according to the SCC, as Coonwell LLC, 5370 Martin Road, same address. I don't know why somebody in Fluvana County is donating $500 to his campaign, and I don't know what their relationship is to Coonwell LLC. We've asked several times for months and have received no answer. My legal basis for these complaints is Virginia Administrative Code 15.2-2287.1, and this was written into the Virginia Administrative Code to protect the citizens of Loudoun County. It states that any board member receiving $100 in donations during a 12-month period prior to a public hearing is considered to have a financial relationship, and that they should make a full public disclosure and be ineligible to vote on that case. Any person violating this code in Loudoun County is guilty of a Class I misdemeanor. Here in Powhatan County, Mr. Powers has acknowledged all of these relationships, still plans to vote. I think that's quite a difference from Loudoun County. That's why I made the ethical complaint, and I think this needs to be investigated. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak for the first public comment period? You may have came in late. If you want to speak, I'll give you a chance.
My name is Chris Sadler. My address is 2781 Janitor Road. I was here before, but I was really nervous, so I wrote this down this time. I wanted to speak on the data center. I've lived rural my whole life, the last 15 years here in Powhatan, and I'll be honest...
Ma'am?
Yes.
The data center will be part of the public hearing part?
Oh, I thought we were...
Not the public comment period.
I'm sorry, I didn't know the difference.
Yeah, I said it at the beginning, I'm sorry.
George Debsky, 6123 Preakness Lakes, Preakness Sticks Lane. Just a very quick comment. Four houses on an acre is not rural, and if you pass that, you're going to have developers lining up in court to do it over and over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll close the first public comment period. Can I get a motion to approve the, the consent agenda, the amended consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to nine, new business. And Mr.?
Yep, so first item under new business, Resolution R. 2024-53 fixing the calendar year 2025 data center equipment personal property tax rate. So this one, staff did review the economic report that was prepared. We also consulted with most of the other localities that have these tax rates to see where they're at, how they've been working for them. Data centers are a highly competitive field, not just in the state, but especially here lately in the central Virginia region. If that's something we want to attract, we need to have a tax rate and a depreciation schedule that puts us in a competitive field. So staff, looking at the rates of others, felt like this was generally in line with those in the region and would make us a competitive advantage to others to try and attract one, which can potentially generate tens of millions of dollars in revenue, high-paying jobs, and generally compared to other commercial uses, lower traffic. So staff is comfortable having researched it with the proposed fee structure and depreciation
Any board comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Denali.
Brett, how many different localities did we, did staff research?
Many. I don't have an exact number, but we've spent a lot of time reaching out to them directly, going out, meeting with them, spent a lot of time speaking to those, all of them certainly in the Richmond region, but then others as well, Mecklenburg, Loudoun, some of the other ones around the region, Louisa, Orange.
And you, you feel confident that we're pretty comparable with the, with the region?
Yeah, especially we're competing in the Richmond region, you know, Northern Virginia is a completely different market, especially in this area. Hampton Roads, completely different market. So looking at the greater Richmond region, which is where we're competing, we believe it's, it's competitive in the right spot.
Mr. Chairman? Or Mr.?
So Brett, isn't Chesterfield County's .24?
Correct, but they have a different depreciation schedule. So as was mentioned, you look at, you look at both, the depreciation schedule and the rate itself, that theirs is correct, lower.
So based on their depreciation schedule and ours, they're essentially what we would be, about $0.40. Okay, thank you.
More comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote? Callie?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next was Resolution R. 2024-56 amending the fiscal year 2025 Powhatan County operating budget by budgeting and appropriating $377,248.37 for school grants. This is all carryover funding. A large portion of it is ESAR funds that have to be expended by the end of this month. So those relate to things such as personnel, coaching for secondary math teachers, and then also recruitment and retention support.
Mr. Chairman? Goodness, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Charlie, is that money held over from last year? Is it a new, is it new money?
Correct, it's carryover funding.
Carryover funding? Do we have a sense of why it wasn't used previously?
It's, this is something that virtually every locality's been struggling with. All of the funds that came available during COVID, people have actually had a hard time spending them all. So rather than doing everything all at once, we've, you know, we kind of methodically working through it. So it's taken us that long to spend it, which they should be able to, but we're using it right up to the end.
Any more comments? Get motion to approve? All in favor? I mean, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one under new business, Resolution R. 2024-57 amending the fiscal year 2025 Powhatan County...
amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five Powhatan County operating budget by budgeting and appropriating six-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars in Grants Fund. Part of this, a smaller part, six thousand dollars, is additional tobacco prevention funds. We applied for a grant with the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth for anti-vaping, anti-tobacco programs, and they actually awarded us more than we applied for. So this is appropriating that amount for the work we're doing in that area, particularly the Capes Over Vapes Campaign that Parks and Rec is helping to head up. We'll share more information on that. Then the rest of it is something we talked about at the last meeting, our SAFER Grant, adequate fire and emergency response. That's six-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. We applied for the third time in a row, got it for the third time in a row, which I don't believe anybody else has done previously. This funding will be used to continue our successful volunteer recruitment program through marketing, radio and internet ads that have been successful for us, personal protective equipment, we'll get ten sets a year, training and conference attendance, volunteer incentives and awards for our active volunteer members. New member costs, we'll cover the cost of physicals for our new members, and then funding our recruitment and retention coordinator position for the next four years.
Thank you, Brett.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Denner.
I just want to make a couple of comments on that. The amount of energy and effort that it's taken to take this incredible opportunity and the grant funding to not only provide equipment and training for the volunteers as well as career staff out here has been absolutely amazing for five volunteer fire companies as well as the volunteer rescue squad. So it's been an incredible asset to this county.
I agree.
Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you all. It brings us to ten public hearings. We'll begin public hearings now.
The first is Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash fourteen. This is case REZ twenty-four dash oh-two LC West LLC requesting a rezone, three parcels, proposing a data center and other uses. And then related to that is Ordinance oh twenty-twenty-four dash fifteen CUP twenty-four dash oh-three for a height increase in the industrial area. The applicant has a presentation as well as staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. Tim Ram on behalf of the applicant. We're pleased to be here this evening and appreciate your time. I do have a presentation about the data center, and I'd like to first start, though, by thanking staff. We appreciate their time and effort, particularly over the last month. I think they've given some good comments and feedback and suggestions as to how the application can be made better, and we've taken those suggestions and comments and have incorporated them now into the application, and it is better for it, definitely. And so I wanted to publicly acknowledge staff and thank you for that. So the site, as most of you probably know, is at the very edge of the county in Powhatan, almost immediately adjacent to Chesterfield County. It's a transitional site set back from Anderson Highway. One of the important things to note about this site is the heavily wooded nature of it, the existing mature tall trees on the site. This is a view from Anderson Highway looking eastbound, and these trees are sixty to ninety feet tall. There are transmission towers on this site now that you cannot see. And so what's important here is that you're unlikely to be able to see the buildings that we have proposed, given these mature tall trees and the density of the buffering. This is another image of the site traveling westbound, and again, mature tall trees almost all the way down to Anderson Highway obscuring the views of what is proposed. We do hear a lot about the comprehensive plan, and one of the reasons that we did select this site is because the comprehensive plan does have an economic opportunity, future land use designation. That's important to us. We try to follow the guidelines that a county sets out whenever we're trying to do business, and this is, we hear a lot about the comprehensive plan and follow the comprehensive plan. There have been some comments tonight about that, and this comprehensive plan that was adopted not too long ago does specifically identify a data center for this property. So sorry to share this slide again for some of you in the audience, but the data center is a very low-impact use, which is one of the reasons that so many other counties find them desirable, and yet it's almost an economic unicorn. It's what we're calling an economic powerhouse. They really don't create much vehicle or truck trips. We hear a lot about, from neighbors who are oftentimes concerned about traffic and so forth, and so if you are ever against that sort of thing, this is a very low-impact use on that front, especially compared to many, many other manufacturing, industrial uses. So from that perspective, the data center is a terrific use. Doesn't create any impact on schools or parks, and it really doesn't impact police, fire, or emergency services. They're sophisticated buildings, they're manned twenty-four hours a day, and so really a low-impact use. If there is an issue that pops up, there's generally somebody who's on it right away. What they do do, however, though, and we've submitted the MANGUM study, is create a very significant positive revenue event, recurring revenue event annually for the county. It does provide high-quality jobs when the data center is up and operational in terms of the information technology jobs, the data scientists, programmers, mechanical and electrical engineers, facilities management. They're good quality jobs with pay above the average prevailing. We think that's important. High-quality construction jobs. These are sophisticated buildings, as I've indicated, and will take skilled construction folks to build them, and so that's certainly a benefit. And then we did, we have heard a fair amount about the tax base and being heavily skewed towards residential. About ninety-two percent of the tax base is residential, eight percent is commercial. So this project alone would greatly expand the tax base, and it will change that ninety-two-eight pretty dramatically. This is the snip from the MANGUM economics study. We did not provide all of the impacts. They have their own modeling that they do, and they have indicated that seventeen million dollars a year will be the estimated number in direct taxes collected by the county. There is also additional spending that circulates within the community and the region with all of the employees and the ecosystem that pops up to support these data centers. There are four jobs outside of a data center for every one job inside, and that's because of the support that is required of these data center projects. So again, the project will help to diversify the tax base and expand it, lower the burden on current residents. This shows the twenty-twenty-three expenditures. I'm sure you're all familiar with this. The bulk of the expenditures do go to education, but there are certainly other beneficiaries as well in terms of public safety, parks, recreation, et cetera. So with an expansion of the revenue, there's certainly some more dollars to go around. So just wrapping up here, we've heard very clearly that the county didn't want to see residential on this site. We're not proposing that at all. I think that's something that we heard and is important. It does implement the county's vision for the site in accordance with the comp plan, and again, data centers was specifically mentioned as a use that would be suitable for that site. It's a large recurring tax revenue, one hundred and seventy million dollars over ten years, according to a third-party MANGUM economics. It does diversify the tax base away from the ninety-two percent eight, as we've discussed with this one project. I believe that the taxes paid by this project will be greater than the next ten largest businesses in Powhatan County alone. It is a low-traffic generator, as I indicated, and provides great new jobs to the community in Powhatan, which we think is terrific and counties often like to see for a variety of reasons. And then lastly, we are improving Page Road and Anderson Highway. We're doing that at our expense and as a part of the project. We're thirty-eight percent of the traffic trips, but we're going to be making those improvements, and we think is a benefit. That's an intersection that we've heard a lot about and will be improved as a part of this project. So we hope that with the project as it's been amended and brought forward to you, that you'll be able to support it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Hello, board members, members of the public. Of course, I know we've kind of gone on adventure here the last six months since I've been here, and we've been talking about this, and we've done site visits and had a lot of conversations with other counties and with the applicant and Planning Commission as well. I think we've come a long ways, like just kind of reiterate, Mr. Ram said, I really think the proffers have been the key issue here, is getting, I feel like, comfortable from staff's perspective that we're comfortable, so you're comfortable with how this project will move forward. And I do believe we are close. Still a few other things. Obviously, from a timing perspective, when the packet went out Wednesday and getting the proffers Thursday, we just didn't have enough time to really dig into it to amend the packet there. So I'll just go over a few things. A lot has already been covered, and again, I know we've talked about this quite a bit, so this is kind of in a bridge report. We see the site here, see what Chesterfield County, the existing access, and then to the far right, you can see the outlines of the one hundred and nineteen-acre parcel. We know there are a couple intermittent riparian areas that I'll show you in a second that would have to be buffered as well. Going on the site, it is heavily wooded around the edges, and I think that does for sure provide an excellent natural buffer. There is the transmission line that goes through the site, and that's sort of why we're here. It does lend well for this type of use, and it is buffered right there on the edge of the county. Looking at the subject site, we can see it is agriculture, even in Chesterfield agriculture, we have some commercial, light, industrial commerce centers, a little bit of everything in that area to the west, even though that is zoned residential, excuse me, agriculture. We do have some larger lots, single-family dwellings, and you can see in the top right corner with the comp plan, economic opportunity, there's a little bit of gateway business in that as well on the site. And we go over to our friends in Chesterfield, we can see corporate office R and D, light industrial, suburban residential, mixed use, so kind of a hodgepodge of different things. With bordering it, corporate office R and D, light industrial, somewhat of a similar use to the Chesterfield side. And just on the comprehensive plan, I think the key point here is large cohesive master plan developments that incorporate commercial and industrial uses. So obviously, I think this is something that fits into that vision with the comprehensive You know, here, just very quick on the actual proposal, we have a little over one-point-five-million-square-feet under roof. Of course, that is two stories, so it wouldn't necessarily be a footprint of one-point-five-million-square-feet. Fifty percent of the site can be covered with buildings, twenty percent of the site remain undeveloped, and as I had recently talked about, the riparian buffering area, for example. The CUP, which is concurrent with this, the conditional use permit, that would allow for the data center structure, if approved, to go to seventy-five feet with ninety feet of attachments to the roof. So sometimes on the roof, you're going to put your HVAC, other sort of mechanical structures, and they would be, you know, sort of kind of fenced around for visually. And a lot of times, these buildings are so big, if they're in the center of the building, you wouldn't necessarily even notice them. And again, with the buffering of the site, but I don't think you'd be able to see it from the road anyway. A site plan would still need to be approved by staff, so if this were to be approved, you know, they're still going to come back and dig into the details. That's kind of what I call the hard engineering is done, your stormwater management, you're going to have, you know, state codes, even some federal regulations to follow there. So that's sort of the next phase, when you really sort of get into, like I said, the engineering, the sites, making sure the water is retained on the site, not released, doesn't exacerbate any stormwater issues in the area. And the transmission substation equipment, I just take this from a conversation with Dominion, that if that was ordered today, you know, the substation equipment that would be on the site, I think it's about five or six acres it would cover, that's a forty-eight-to-sixty-month lead, forty-eight to sixty months, you know, if you order it today, it would come on site. So we are looking at, you know, build out would be quite a while. Again, here is the updated September sixteenth version, just showing the buffer. We have, you know, along the west, fifty-foot natural buffer, have a hundred-foot building setback, that's to the west, to the Page roadside, north, fifty-foot, another hundred-foot building setback to the north, to the east, fifty-foot buffer there, another fifty-foot buffer on the south. And if you look sort of the south there, there is a strip of land that is also owned by this landowner that would, you know, it's not part of this application, but it's a hundred-foot heavily wooded. And you can also see the very south, where that red line is, that is a riparian area. There's two dark green or riparian areas, which fifty-foot on each side would have to be undisturbed, so that would give you, you know, another good natural buffer, at least from sixty and Page. So we did get the changes from the non-three Plan Commission hearing, with the Plan Commission four to one voted to deny. Again, I think principally that was concerns about the proffers. You know, I do believe there was, you know, essentially, you know, we hope these things can sort of get worked on between now and the board. So one of the just proffers, I'll just point out, they agree only permit data center use for first eighteen months, and these are the updated proffers that we got just on the sixteenth. Eighteen months after rezoning, any other uses after eighteen months would be part of an industrial park master plan for the property. So the applicant has left in some of those industrial uses. They did remove some part of the proffers, but essentially, this says that from now to eighteen months, they would just be data center, but that could change. I don't really suspect that will be the issue, that they will move forward with the data center, but again, I mean, I'm pointing it out, it's in there, so it is in there, and that is something that we, you know, staff wants to note. And again, they do agree to grant interparcial access to the Northern Jordan Parcel, four-to-three-five-seven. That's that northern parcel, if we just kind of go back here, just to the north, and there's obviously a parcel there, this economic opportunity to the east. So they would grant, that is in the amended proffer. We would still, from staff's perspective, you know, still, you know, like to work on the proffer some more and get some language clear. This is essentially a contract between the county and the developer, and I think it's important that, you know, we get every detail correct, and at the time, you know, when we put the staff report out, we just didn't have this. Again, I do believe it's improved, and I believe we are substantially, you know, on our way to sort of, I think staff would be comfortable with recommending approval, but still some more things to sort of iron out. Any questions for me?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Denner.
You said you're close.
Mr. Denner.
Okay.
We can do public hearing.
Okay, understood, gotcha.
Then we'll get our turn.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Ligon. That brings us to our public comment period. That brings us to our public comment period for our, oh, two oh two four dash fourteen. First up is Chris Sadler. Next up is Marion Kimball.
Me again, Chris Sadler, twenty-seven eighty-one Genetor Road. As I said, or started to say, I've been living rural my whole life, the last fifteen years here in Palatine. And, excuse me, I'll admit, when I heard data center, the first thing I thought was data, ooh, technology. Technology means change, and change means people. And I think I was automatically shutting doors to it right right out of the chute. I'm still digesting that we have a Starbucks, so I'm probably a little behind the eight ball there. So I Googled, what is a data center? When I figured out what it actually was, I did more research. And of course, the revenue numbers, they're incredible. And even though I feel Palatine tries to live within its means, just that kind of people, we won't be able to keep that up for but so long because change is coming. After I did a Facebook post, I realized that a lot of people were on board for a discreet business, one that doesn't add more cars to our roads, one that doesn't burden our resources or our county personnel, and one that generates kind of day-to-day without really much attention. Excuse me. The proposal's been explained and a lot of concerns addressed. And I I think some of them put to rest. But the conscientious plan's been developed to consider residents and especially residents at that county line. I think from what I've heard and what I've read, the biggest concern was regarding the road plan. Yes, the roadwork would be inconvenient to everybody who who lives in Palatine, but temporary. Kind of let's face it, that intersection isn't the greatest intersection anyways. But we've all adapted to it. It's just part of life now. Everybody knows, well, you know, if you got to go this way or go that way, avoid the intersection or know what you're going to do to navigate through it. So yes, it will be, you know, a temporary inconvenience, but to, you know, a means to an end, so to speak. So I'm just here again mentioning these things. And maybe when these things are considered, create a pro and a con list. And you can see what this particular plan brings. I see more pros than cons. And that was all I wanted to say, is just to keep that in mind.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Carl Schwenderman after after Marion Kimball.
Good evening, I'm Marion Kimball. I live at twenty-nine sixty-eight Pineview Drive in Palatine. I'm a long-term power supply planner. And there is a significant shortage of capacity for power due to these data centers. We are still waiting on a J-Lock study to come out. This shortage was acknowledged in a recent Southside Electric Advisory meeting. And I believe Mr. Powers was there, where the president of Southside Electric stated, we have a capacity shortage, and it's significant. Adding this data center, while it may be one of the smaller ones, adds to that problem. It would not be a lot to delay looking at this until after the J-Lock study comes out. The General Assembly addresses all the issues around Dominion's ability to provide this power because it's not there at this time. And it seems extremely imprudent to me, irrational, to move forward with this right now when we're on the cusp of having that study. The General Assembly, the next General Assembly is going to address this issue. They're working with Dominion. And there's another Integrated Resource Plan we're waiting on from Dominion. We're waiting on this information as to how to handle all this. And in fact, there is a three-to-four-year delay for substation and transformer supply chain. Why are we moving forward so fast with this when you have an implied delay here anyway? And we don't have the information from the state yet. So while it might be a great project or not a great project, depending on what you think about it, I think you're moving to forward too fast. And a delay until we have this information from J-Lock and the state and the General Assembly would be really more rational than what's happening here. And I don't understand, if the Planning Commission didn't vote for this, why we're even talking about this now tonight. I'm very surprised at this process or lack of error. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my hello, my name is Klaus Schwenderman. I'm Teresa Lane. I lived I live like two miles from this data center. But my biggest question is the fact this this data center is going to bring in seventeen million dollars a year in tax revenue. Can Palatine please have a proffer or set up something that the seventeen million goes to fixing all of Page Road and building Carter Gallery? Because because Page Road is in terrible shape, and it needs and it needs a major reconstruction. And there should be blind curves and intersections on it. And the fact that this if this is going to bring in seventeen million dollars, I don't I don't think money is the issue. I think that it needs, I think that they need to plan to budget some money from this to go fix Page, all of Page Road and build Carter Gallery. But also, could they ask the developer to build a sidewalk or trail between County Line Road and Oak Bridge Road along Route sixty, along the Water Main Easement? Because I think, because we might, we should go for, we should ask, get Page Road fixed and Route sixty fixed.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Weir. Chuck Dubois. Do. DeBose.
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Debbie Weir. My husband and I have lived at fifteen oh one Page Road for the last forty-six-plus years. Commercial growth in Palatine County needs to be well-thought-out and well-planned in keeping with the county's rural character. It should not, should it should not, should be on Route sixty, not on a rural residential road near an F-intersection on Route sixty. Data centers are the latest hot development craze. And because of that fact, the Virginia General Assembly has commissioned the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, J-Lock, to study data center impacts to Virginia. I have previously emailed you all the General Assembly's resolution. The J-Lock report will be ready in December and is designed to help counties make informed decisions on the impacts data centers will have on their locality for water, electricity needs, and other potential costs and benefits. Your decision should not be based on the estimated tax revenue, but on all the potential impacts, both negative and positive, that data centers bring to a rural residential area. Before this data center decision is made, why can't we wait to see what the J-Lock report says? The dominant issue with this rezoning is that there is no defined end client for this data center. All the provided projections for noise levels, water needs, electricity needs, number of employees, traffic volume, number, size, types of backup generators, and potential tax revenue are totally guesstimates and are unable to be specifically defined because there is no end client. Data centers are built to an end client's users' needs and specification. This is a huge unknown with no defined end user. Will the end user be willing to pay for the latest technology that will be needed to mitigate noise, air pollution, water usage, and electricity to do, to be a good neighbor to Palatine and to our rural residential neighborhood? The applicant is dangling big money, which is included in an applicant-commissioned May twenty-fourth Mangum Economics report. But do not be fooled. Even though the comprehensive plan that was passed by a three-two vote in twenty-twenty-one indicates that this location should be an economic opportunity to development in Palatine, it is not a good location for data center, nor is it a good location for any industrial development because it does not have an entrance on Route sixty. In the end, this development will cost the county its citizens, its rural character, and its wildlife. Just like the Planning Commission voted, please vote to deny or at minimum defer your final decision until the public can see and review the updated proffers and after the J-Lock report is released in December. Thank you for your time and attention.
Chuck Dubois. DeBose. George Stebsky, you're up next.
Chuck Dubois, eighteen fifteen Boyer Road. When I stood up and talked before the Planning Commission, I was accused of proposing what-ifs, possible things that could happen. I'm an electrical engineer, been so for over forty years, first twentieth Dominion. I specialize in transmission modeling for network analysis applications. I can read one lines, I can check a map and tell you where the substations are located. And I took a little look at what was going on up in Northern Virginia, particularly in Loudoun County. And a little northeast of Dulles Airport, there's a nice little blob of them that they put in. Now, from my days at Virginia Power, I remember what substations were up there. I remember what facilities were up there. They've extended the high voltage lines from Loudoun Substation, south of Dulles, north, to accommodate all of this. All right? So, you know, roughly two-mile-square piece of property sits about seventeen data centers that Google identifies. But you start looking at rooftops, you start noticing some similarities of other buildings to it. In that, there's a dozen substations that have been put in. All right, that's a big chunk of network. All those big two-thirty-thousand-volt lines that you see, the one that is running over this property is just that type of line. Now, that means the entire corridor now is susceptible to future projects for these. This is not one project. Once a county has established itself as accepting these data centers, they're going to end up getting more applications. And you can't turn, you know, if you've accepted one, I'm not sure you could have the stance to accept or to not deny additional ones. Dominion Energy, in their twenty-twenty-three report, states that they have ninety-four data centers connected with over four gigawatts of energy. Now, that's a thousand times a thousand, which you generally see on your bill and paying. So that's a lot of energy statewide. So essentially, Virginia has applied a mark upon itself to be a future site for data centers. The county itself, pretty much north of Route sixty, and I'm not sure I would exclude south of Route sixty, is prime property for these data centers. The two-thirty line that is running over this property that you guys are discussing runs diagonally completely through the county, east to west. So they could drop substations in anywhere they'd like along that route or route the two-thirty line, you know, to it. There's also a five-hundred-thousand-volt line that runs northeast, I guess, north along the eastern side of the county. That five-hundred line is pretty much the backbone of supplying the numerous stations that are in Loudoun County. So that pretty much allows any any site within Palatine as being susceptible for one of these data centers. That's a lot of big buildings. So my history lesson. Thank you very much for your attendance.
George Debski, sixty-one twenty-three Pecan Sticks Lane. Folks, in the current presentation of this proposal, I would either urge you to vote against it or at least delay it. I will give you my personal experience, which is similar. I lived in a town where FedEx wanted to come in and put in a distribution center. The issues were the same, big money for the town, for the government and all sorts of stuff. At the end, it did not materialize. And fifteen years forward, there are now two truck stops there, and FedEx is about three times the size. And the tax burden on the town's people has not really changed that much. So I know that change is something that is here, and the only thing that's constant is change. But how it's managed is really the key to the development. And again, in the present presentation, I would either delay this till all these things get ironed out or I would completely stop it. But I would not urge you to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ann Langham and Lorraine Jones, after that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ann Langham, and I live at fourteen sixteen Page Road, right up the road from the proposed data center. I am a very recent Northern Virginia transplant. And believe me, we in Northern Virginia didn't want the data centers either. They're noisy and they cause pollution. We've had these meetings before, several of them, and some of the questions we're still waiting for answers to, we've never had. We would like to know how many generators, backup generators, are going to be there and how much diesel fuel is going to be stored at that facility. As people know, diesel generators emit harmful pollutants such as nitrogen, particulate matter, and sulfur dioxide. These pollutants contribute to air pollution, smog, and acid rain, which can harm ecosystem and health systems. Health risks, exposure to diesel exhaust can lead to serious health issues, including respiratory problems, cardiovascular diseases, and even cancer. Children, the elderly, that's me, and those with pre-existing health conditions, that's me, are particularly vulnerable. Greenhouse gas emissions. Diesel generators produce significant amounts of carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gases contributing to climate change. Noise pollution. Diesel generators can produce noise levels ranging from fifty decibels to over one-hundred decibels, depending on their size and design. We don't know the size, we don't know the design, we don't know how many. For context, a hundred decibels is similar to the noise level of a chainsaw or live rock concert. So those are some of the the few things with the generators that we've never had answers to. Other question I have is the buffer. I think, and I'm not sure, I think most of the people with me here, the buffer, I think the developers are missing the point here. The buffering of trees, we don't care what the data center looks like. It's not going to be ugly, it's going to be fine. We don't mind seeing the data center. The buffering is for the noise. The data center produces a hum, which is harmful in long-term effect. It's harmful for everybody, it's harmful for the animals, the plants, the people that live nearby. We're looking for a noise buffer. Most of those trees, and I brought this up at the last time, that you show on that picture, that's a spring and summer picture. Come winter and fall, those leaves are down. So really, there is no buffer. And once again, I'll bring this up. You said there's going to be no impact on the police or the fire department? The data center is listed as on Homeland Security, a critical infrastructure, which means it could be targeted by homegrown terrorists, by anybody. More police presence patrolling that area is going to be be necessary. Are the police equipped to handle that? Do they need special special training? And the fire, you've got, we don't know how much diesel is going to be stored there. There have been fires at these facilities. So my question is, you know, thank you. I would vote, ask you all to please vote no on this. We still have a lot more questions that need to be answered. Thank you.
Good evening, Lorraine Jones. We've all said this over the last few months, and anyway, I'll try to keep it short. I am concerned about the data center. I would like to see y'all say no. I'd at least like for you I'd at least like for you to put it further down the line until the J-Lock study can be completed. J-Lock does not get involved in something unless there are issues there to complete, work for the state government, believe me, I know that. All right. My concerns about Page Road and the Route sixty intersection. The public information sessions with the developers say that they will, they've indicated that they will pay for the improvements to Page Road and Route sixty, up to a two million dollar limit. If that doesn't cover it, it's gonna then become an issue for the county and/or VDOT to complete that. What they're looking at doing is an R-cut section, which is going to, coming out of Page Road, I don't know how familiar y'all are with it, but if you come out of the lower end of Page Road, you turn right and you head to the western part of the county. This is what they're asking you to do. You're gonna come out on a shoulder, you're gonna merge across two lanes of sixty-five mile an hour traffic to go up to the next cutover to make a U-turn to come back. That's fine for a car. You try in a Mack truck pulling a full load down the road, or a school bus. They take a long time to get started, and they take a long time to get stopped. You can sit at Page Road through five, for five minutes or longer to just get out on it. These vehicles are still gonna be rolling west, merging over two lanes of traffic. You know, you know how it is when you get behind a tractor trailer, who's gonna let them in through two lanes of traffic to get over to make a U-turn? Not very many people. Page Road is rated as an F. They've stated that once these improvements have been done, it will still be rated an F intersection. There is no improvement. The only reason it's being done is to accommodate the data center. Otherwise, Page Road could continue as it currently is. Looking at five-plus years of construction, that's five-plus years of dump trucks, gravel trucks, cement trucks, tractor trailers, in and out constantly. Will not affect the construction equipment, because they're gonna have flaggers out there. They've already told us that. It'll be the residents that have to go west on Page Road to go out by Walmart to take the U-turn, to come back east. You talk about jobs, the jobs that are being promoted, this is right on the county line. Are you trying to tell me that you're not gonna allow anyone from Chesterfield, Henrico, City of Richmond, Petersburg? We're within twenty minutes of all those places. These will not be only jobs for Palatane. Thank you very much. Please consider this in at least the J-Lock recommendations. Thank you.
Endorse Valdatory? I might be saying that wrong. Okay. Does Doris decline? Okay. Bill Melton? Followed by Michelle Stunnett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and my name is Bill Melton. I've lived at forty-eight fifty-five Old Buckingham Road at Palatane for thirty years. I'm here to speak on twenty-four dash oh-two R-A-Z and twenty-four dash oh-three C-U-P. The proposed zoning is I-1, requesting a data center campus, which they all have stated. It is in conformity with the Economic Opportunity Zone and the Gateway Business Future Land Use Plan Designation, and is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Just a little history on the project. This applicant, excuse me, not this applicant, the owner of this property's had two residential rezonings come before this, not this board, but previous boards, and they were all turned down based upon citizen input and board of supervisors' concerns. They're back, so the comprehensive plan was updated to allow for the economic opportunity and gateway business, which the applicant is now making an effort to do. So, I think it's important to know that this project is conformity, in conformity with the comprehensive plan. Applicant has proffered, as they mentioned earlier, that they will do I-1, and they will guarantee that for eighteen months is only a data center. People laughed, that was a proffer, let's be bound to that. After eighteen months, the I-1 uses that are in the allowable use table will be allowed less the uses that the board has said was okay, but the applicant has proffered out uses. So, that's important to remember. Data centers, as they mentioned, is a low impact. It's an economic driver. The project delivers seventeen million, based upon the reports that I've read. Seventeen million is almost two times the annual tax revenue collected by the top ten businesses in the county. It's a five billion dollar investment in Palatane. They will deliver about three hundred and seventy-two million in direct and indirect economic benefit. This is new tax revenue for Palatane, which will diversify the ninety-two eight current mix of the tax rate. The new revenue can help keep residential taxes low, pay down county debt, fund county schools, county parks, county public services, and even possibly, as Mr. Swindeman said, create a county road improvement fund to start fixing our own roads versus waiting on VDOT to provide funding. The applicant has proffered to provide two million dollars of intersection improvements at Page Road. There is also an escalator clause for some that would want to read the report, that would cover some of the increased costs, so it'd be needed. The applicant has proffered language to allow interconnectivity to other parcels as requested by the county at the time of need. It is a twenty-four hour operation, providing a hundred and fifty jobs, IT operations, engineers, system experts, and facility management. Will also provide construction jobs. Hopefully, these will be jobs that our recent graduates can capture as they try to find employment in the future. I'm wrapping up here, please. The applicant has proffered to exceed and meet the all developmental standards. The existing sixty to ninety-foot trees will obscure the views. It will use the underutilized county water system. In the pack, there's a letter from VDOT, excuse me, from Virginia Power stating that they can provide the needed electricity for the data center. Compliance ordinance will be held on this project. They will also have a noise, we have a noise ordinance in the county, and they've agreed to proffer to have a sound engineer monitor that noise. If they violate it, there'll be served papers to get it fixed, if they don't, they won't operate. Couple of things real quick, like, that it does not do. It does not create a lot of traffic. Hundred and fifty jobs throughout three shifts is probably what it'll be. I read a study that said data centers create about eighty percent less traffic than other light industrial and manufacturing jobs. It does not impact our local schools or parks, and it does have very little impact on police, fire, and emergency service. Most importantly, I think it's important to remember, this is not residential development. To close-
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Can you wrap it up?
Thank you, I'll wrap it up. I'm just asking you to consider approval for this project. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next up is Larry Durbin after Michelle Stunnett.
Michelle Stunnett, Palatane County. I have a whole list of notes I've made through this meeting, so I'll try to go quick. The developer talks about many jobs. For who? I'm not sure of how many specialized, high-tech construction, data center building, construction people we have living in Palatane, but it's probably a handful if that. We don't have the infrastructure, we have not addressed the infrastructure, we haven't talked about addressing the infrastructure. That's been spoken since day one. We do not have the water source, we do not have the electricity. We are on well water west, the western part of the county. I know that this is on county water, but when Chesterfield County turns that knob shut in five years, we're screwed. They also stated in a previous meeting that they would not be bringing solar panels to the property, and now it's in the proffers. Fifty-foot tree buffer, those are hardwoods, okay? So, those mature, tall trees lose their leaves and then stay buck naked, and there's no beautiful lush buffers at that point. Collective generator noise, we've asked, I know I've asked at least three or four meetings, how many generators are we talking? What is the diesel fuel capacity? How is that gonna be stored? That is an issue, because even though the buildings might have their own extinguishing system, I'm sure that these tanks of diesel generator fuel will not have their own extinguishing capability. So, me and you having a conversation in a room, just imagine that's equal to one generator. Now, if we get all these people in the room having conversations with themselves, that collective noise is gonna be equal to all the collective generators that we don't even know how many there are gonna be. Seventeen million dollars in tax revenue for Palatane County in twenty thirty-four, that's ten years from now. They could refer to that as build-out. So, how much is the taxpayer's gonna have to pay before the oceans of tax revenues start floating ashore? R-cut for Page Road. It is an F-rated intersection as it is, and R-cut makes it more dangerous, and how can an F rating be much worse than an F? This is gonna happen. We're gonna come out, cross two lanes of traffic, tractor trailer's gonna block it, school bus is gonna need to go this way, and then you're gonna have the ninety-year-old woman who's driving the wrong way up the road anyway, and that happens at least four or five times a year in this county. Lower tax rate for the data center that you just voted in. Your yes vote is equally as devastating as making Palatane County a sanctuary city. Palatane County has overinflated the personal property tax on the residents over the past couple of years, but yet you've just given them a lush offer. Thank you for supporting your citizens and for thinking, you know, we should come first in all these deals, not the waving of the money and the sniffing of the trees. So, in closing, if you push this through before the J-Lock study is concluded and has recommendations before Congress, they are going to regulate, they're gonna put more regulations on it, it's gonna make them harder to come here. So, by pushing it through before those regulations come through, congratulations, just like solar.
My name is Larry Durbin. I live at fifteen eighteen Page Road. Presentation by the developers of this project say that the building, a huge data center on the property, will be a great for Palatane County by bringing in a significant increase in property tax revenue while having very little impact on the county's resources and its residents, but I don't believe that's the case. The development will increase the traffic volume on Page Road, and I'll say upfront, a lot of points have already been made, but they bear repeating. It'll increase the traffic at the intersection of Page Road and Route sixty by eleven hundred and forty-four trips per day. This intersection is already at a level of service of F, which is the lowest rating possible. This will add more congestion to that intersection. The applicant has proffered to require all contractors to direct their heavy-duty construction trucks to access the property via Anderson Highway and Page Road intersection and not leave the site using the westbound Page Road. Who will enforce this contractual restriction? The sheriff does not have any legal authority, since these trucks can legally utilize Page Road to access the property. And what's the penalty if someone does violate that proffer? Typical daily water usage in flat rock area has a capacity of five hundred and seventy-two thousand gallons purchased from Chesterfield County. The estimated daily water usage for the data center is a hundred thousand gallons, but the water usage of a data center can vary widely depending on their design. How will this increase in the ban impact the county's ability to allow further economic development along the Anderson Highway corridor? Typical data center can require to a hundred megawatts per day from Dominion Energy, and they've indicated they can serve it. They don't have a choice, they have to. Dominion has noted that while existing infrastructure can support this growth, it will drive up the need for ongoing transmission upgrades throughout the region. The costs for transmission infrastructure are divided among all Dominion Energy customers. Northern Virginia has the highest density of data centers in the world. Fairfax, Loudoun County, Prince William County, and Caroline County are all working to regulate data centers due to the rising concerns about their impact. The Virginia General Assembly has directed J-Lock to review the impacts of data centers. The background for that report says, although Virginia provides incentives for data centers to locate in the state, there are increasing concerns about the industry's impact, immense and growing energy use, which may affect consumer cost and the state's ability to meet renewable energy goals, community concern such as noise and visibility, negative impacts on natural, agricultural, and historic resources. For all these reasons, I ask that you deny the applicant's rezoning request. Thank you for that.
Thanks, sir. Followed by Mike Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I've been here a couple of times before. There's been a lot of discussion about data centers, but I'm most interested in the overwhelming support by the community for adherence to the comprehensive plan. I've learned a little bit about it in the last five years. It's my understanding that that plan is provided through the Code of Virginia as a guide so that the county can designate what they'd like to see in different parts of the county. But I believe the code goes on to say that it's a guide that should be relied on by the citizens, telling them what they could use their properties for. A little bit of history, our first application, I don't know, I've forgotten, maybe four or five years ago, was consistent with the comp plan. Comp plan at the time allowed for a zoning ordinance of VR, Village Residential. So, we submitted an application of Village Residential. We were told, no, we don't want residences in that area, even though it's what the comp plan said. The comp plan then went to revision and said, we wanna have mixed use in that area. We'll allow partial housing and partial industrial. So, we submitted a new application, partial housing, partial industrial. The county responded by changing the ordinance, which made it economically not feasible, requiring phasing of the commercial and not allowing the residential to be built until a high percentage of the industry had filled. We had two developers with letters of interest to buy the property for all the industrial. They walked when you did that, and the board knew that when they did it. This is the third time we've come before this board with an application consistent with the comprehensive plan that the citizens should be able to rely on. We're looking for where are the homeowners' rights to rely on that guide, to give them guidance as to what the county really wants and what parts of the county. I think the staff has worked pretty tirelessly. I've seen behind the scenes of what Providence has done. Because of our previous applications, we had a lot of data on this site. They said, thank you very much, but they went and hired the best consultants, redid all the data, did everything required on environmental, on topo, on the subsurface conditions. They've done, I think, an over-the-top job of looking and turning every stone to see if there's any test nails here to why this project shouldn't be here. I think they and the staff have worked together very closely recently, and I believe have met in compromises, so everybody's concerns have been taken care of. I've been asked, why are we selling our property? Beautiful piece of property. Well, it's my birthday today. I happen to be seventy-three years old. That bush hogging and repairing roads when they wash out and replacing fences so my horses don't get out is getting a little bit old. And so, we're here asking you to support the comprehensive plan that protects the rural nature of this county. Over ninety percent of this county is protected by that comp plan. Embrace that, that gives you your rural character. There's only three areas in this county where economic opportunity is allowed, only three. One of them has no utilities, the other are a bunch of small parcels which were taken in assembly to do anything near what we have. Timmons was asked at the EDA meeting, what can we do to improve our economic development in this county? They only had one recommendation, study that piece of property on the eastern edge of the county, that is your economic engine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dell. Mike Hall? Followed by Bill Cox.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hall, and I'm at seventeen forty-six Old Palatane Estates. I'm probably gonna say some things that have already been said tonight, but they need to be heard again. Please vote no on the proposed data center on Page Road. As a county resident for more than twenty years and a resident who lives off of Page Road, I just don't understand how development- I just don't understand how development in this magnitude could even be considered, knowing what's going on at the bottom of Page Road. Did you ever take into consideration that Page Road is a segment of the old Richmond Road before Route 60? It was the road that went from the west all the way to the city. The original maps of the county show Page Road, and it really should be a scenic byway as opposed to a commercial development. There's a lot of history to it, and it appears that nobody has even addressed that at all in any of our discussions. And I really think that should be looked at. I'm sure that some commission members would agree that Page Road as it is cannot support or sustain any more traffic, let alone heavy truck use for two-year construction and now possibly five years as we wait for equipment to be delivered. That's a five-year inconvenience at the bottom of Page Road and Route 60. That has to be taken into consideration. We used to enjoy our ride out of the county from Page Road until the many recent rezonings and the CUPs that have been permitted. We already know what's happening at the Route 60 crossover, and it's a failure per VDOT. The applicant has sought his two previous housing opportunities and commercial opportunities. Yes, they were denied due to the obvious impact of Page Road and Route 60 and the constituents, the county constituents. Here he comes back with another bite of the apple, and he just explained his reasoning, and I understand that. But I do believe it's not in compliance with the comp plan. The comp plan is prepared per your Code of Virginia. And in the Code of Virginia, it states in section 15-2, "The comprehensive plan of the county shall be made with the purpose of guiding and accomplishing and coordinate an adjusted and harmonious development of the territory which will, in accordance with present and profitable future needs and resources, best promote the health, safety, morale, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the inhabitants, including the elderly and the persons with disabilities." Living on Page Road, I would say that this is totally counter to that. We cannot ignore the many questions that are still being asked, and they haven't been answered. We don't know who the client is. We don't know who the data center is being built for. Is it Google? Is it Amazon? Is it a foreign government? We don't know. All right? So of all the numerous concerns, it's already been mentioned. Is the water usage been talked about? We don't know what it's going to entail. Noise, fuel storage, traffic, night sky. Road improvements to Page Road is limited to just the bottom of Page Road. The runoff groundwater. Emergency services, carcinogens. And what is the long-term plan or the exit strategy? Has that been addressed at all? And finally, the General Assembly, we really should wait for their decision before you act on this. So please vote no. Thank you.
Bill Cox, once again, I'm speaking on behalf of Castlemont Farm, an organic farm and a respite of community activism. Five minutes, please. 1405 Charles Bridge Road. We have a firm. We have a myth, and we have reality. The firm is Province Group, California Residential Developer. Website says they have 75 projects. It's under the belt roughly $850 million. No demonstrated competencies developing data centers, period. Project size is $5.5 billion. The capital requirements are beyond the size and scope of their demonstrated competencies. The myth. The myth is the data center. The only time you see buildings. Here's a conceptual plan. There are no buildings. The only time you see buildings is when the lawyer is up here waving his arms. Suddenly, they materialize. And that's the basis for the $17 million. They don't exist. The reality is this is a light industrial zoning for 45 potential uses. Mr. Kenny, you said in the town hall you wouldn't support that. We'll get to find out. There's an unknown revenue stream. At the planning commission, suddenly we had Plan B. No one said what Plan B was. And tonight we hear an industrial park master plan beginning to change in front of your eyes. It is not supported by the comprehensive plan. Economic opportunity is a mixed-use development. Plan development, residential and commercial. 70% commercial, no more than 30% personal residential. Data centers are one of the uses that could be over on the commercial side. A light industrial-only rezoning does not fit the comprehensive plan. It's just that simple. People have asked about generators. They can't give an answer on generators because they don't have a building. They don't have a plan. It just doesn't exist. We need a development plan. We don't need a sales plan. If you go to Hanover County and look at what TRACT, that's their developer is doing. They say, here's what they say. This was at the community meeting, not after trying to drag it out of them for public meetings. Experienced team has been building and operating data centers and fiber networks since the 1990s. Team has worked and sold to the largest data centers in the world. Well capitalized with over $1.5 billion of capital from the top tier. They brag about it. They don't hide it. They have a conceptual plan. It has all kinds of buildings on it, all kinds of information. They don't have an empty field. Our conceptual plan for this is the same thing you can get off of the GIS system. This might be a good idea, but it's an empty promise. Ask these fine folks to come back when they really have a plan of development. The last time we got sold a sales pitch for rezoning was Spring Branch. And look what that's now turned into. Interesting parallel. Please oppose this. Thank you.
We'll close the public comment period for public hearing 02024-14 and open it up to board comments.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Denae.
I wanted to thank you all for your comments. It's a, somebody said tireless effort by the staff and the developer and the board members. It's been a process. It has. But I thank you all for your comments here tonight, for the many emails and phone calls and face-to-face conversations. I'm hopeful that this engagement continues. It's important. Every time I get an email, I thank them for the email, and I ask them to continue to reach out whenever they want to provide their opinion or feedback. The engagement is important, whether it's this development or another development. We value that. To sit up here and talk in front of an empty room is not enjoyable. So we appreciate that. We're here for you. We all value that. We don't work for staff. We don't work for developers. We work for you. So we thank you for that. Mr. Ramp, thank you for your presentation earlier. It's Powhatan. Stick around a little while. We'll help you out. But thank you for that. Thank you for your many meetings and trying to work through all this stuff. I know, I know, I feel like we're kind of inching our way closer to getting these questions answered. And Ligon, you said you're close. I'm just kind of curious, do we have any kind of timeframe? What we're looking for to get some of these proffers reviewed and maybe even a timeframe on what that looks like?
Well, I mean, we've had at least three or four different iterations. I think it's improved every time. So I fully expect that we're given more, you know, we got the last one on Thursday. As I said, packets went on a Wednesday. You know, I feel fully that the October meeting, we would have, you know, at least, you know, the final product as this has sort of worked its way through now in front of the board. So I feel very comfortable that that could happen for the, obviously for October 28th, when you next meet.
I'm almost hesitant to ask this question, but is the staff curious to see the results of the J-Lark study?
Sure. I mean, I have, you know, they've studied lots of things over the years, and I would be very interested to see. And I think that was due middle of September. Is that what I heard? December, okay, I'm sorry. We're in the middle of September now. I definitely. Sure.
Well, I know the planning commission asked a lot of great questions, and I definitely am thankful for what they've done in this process and asking some of those tough questions. This is not easy to sit up here and make these decisions, but if it was easy, everybody would do it. So I guess I just want to kind of open it up for other board comments before I come back with a motion.
Mr. Kenny.
So echo what Bill said. Thank you so much for the comments tonight and also for the comments at the town hall I held a couple of weeks ago. And thank you for stealing some of my thunder tonight. But I want to go back to the generators because they've been able to estimate the water. They've been able to estimate the power. And even though you don't have a user, you can still kind of project what's going there. But we still don't have a number on the generators. I mean, so I would like a number. I would like to know how much fuel approximately is going to be stored there? What kind of fire suppression system would be used if something happened to that fuel? And I also noticed in the ordinance that you're not to exceed 65 decibels between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. But then beyond that, it kind of goes out the window. Each externally emergency generator should only be tested during the hours of eight and five. Okay, how many will be tested during that timeframe? Monday through Friday for no longer than 30 minutes each, unless a longer time requirement is required by federal, state, local, or manufacturer's requirements. Well, to me, we should already know what those laws are. If they're federal, state, or local, they're probably already on the books for the generators. So I would like to know what that noise level could possibly be projected to be during the day. And then I also noticed, granted, in an emergency situation, all the generators would be running at the same time. I would also like to know what the projected noise level would be should there be a power outage. And to your point, Mr. Cox, the first 18 months, one use data center. So thank you.
I had a question for Callie. Do we have to accept the amended proffers? Do we have to vote on that to accept those?
Yeah, at some point.
Do we have to do it tonight?
It depends on the motion you were going to make. If you were going to approve, make a motion to approve, you would definitely want to clarify which proffer.
I wasn't going to make a motion.
Okay. So I would recommend.
I haven't got all the information yet, so I'm still digesting everything.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Denae.
It was mentioned about reducing the tax base. Is there any firm idea, Brad? I don't know if your staff has any idea of, obviously, it may be an estimate, whether an occupant like this would drop us down to 8515? Or is that just a best guess?
Yeah, well, I don't have that figured here tonight. But Economic Development and Finance have been running some of those numbers, trying to validate the economic report that they provided us as well. And it would be, it would move it. It's significant percentage points, you know, where other projects in the past, we've been moving it by decimal points. This would move it. You could actually see significant movement towards that 8515 goal that we've talked about or greater. So that's something that if you are to defer this, we could have that completed validation of their economic analysis as well as a projection of what that would do to the residential-commercial tax split.
I'm certainly eager to see that, and I'm hopeful that the staff and the Province Group would be looking forward to coming together. I know we've made a lot of progress recently, which I'm excited about. We're getting there. But with that, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to defer both 2024-14, 2402, and 2403.
A second.
Hey. How long do you want to defer, Bill? 30, 60?
30 days.
Mr. Chairman, or maybe Callie, in terms of if another board member wanted to offer a motion amending his, what's the process for doing that?
You could make a friendly amendment and see if he agrees to it. If not, we would take the motions in order.
Talk to me. I, I think some points have been made tonight about the J-Lark study that is resonating with me a bit. It's right around the corner. I think December, right? Is that right? It's right around the corner. I would personally like to factor it into our decision-making. That's not 30 days, but 60 days is the, my clock works. And it would give us more time to work with the landowner and with 90 days. I'm sorry. Virginia Tech. So that's what I would, I would offer is to wait for the J-Lark study.
Order, please. The meeting, the study starts in 90 days with the J-Lark. When will we get the results of the J-Lark?
It starts in 90 days?
Yeah. The results come in 90 days. Yeah.
The developer in the General Assembly charged J-Lark to start the project in September 23. Was when they were given the.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second.
That's right. Did you accept the, I don't, did you make a proposed amendment to the?
Bill asked me to talk to him, so that's what I was doing. I've gotten mixed messages here. Is the J-Lark study going to be completed in December? Yes or no?
I don't have a crystal ball.
Best, the best information you have now is by December.
Not a giant fan of kicking things down the road too far, but I'm going to hold to my original motion.
Fine. That's fine.
We have a second.
Yep, we do.
If you could do a roll call, that'd be helpful.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, deferring to the October meeting. Is that what you, is that your motion?
October 28th.
Mr. Nadi.
Hi.
Mr. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
No.
Vice Chair Morset.
Aye.
Chair McClung.
Aye.
Motion passed. Very good, B.
Yep. So then, next item on the agenda under public hearings is ordinance 2024-16.
So then next item on the agenda under public hearings is ordinance 2024-16. This is 24-05 R E Z E W N Investments LLC requesting a rezon roughly 6.9 acres from A10 to C C Commerce Center.
Hello? Okay. Moving on to the next item, E W N Investments, 2405 R O Z R E Z to rezon 6.9 acres from A10 to Commerce Center. And I'll just give a, you can see the property here. It would be west of Sheets at Dorset Road on Anderson Highway in District One. Here's a, you know, picture of the property to the right there. The subject site, we can see it's zoned, the subject site is zoned Ag 10, properties around it, Commercial Center. You know, we have a Mexican restaurant, we have Sheets. I think there is an animal hospital right there, so pretty active corridor. And you can see to the right, comprehensive plan, has a has a future gateway business with the subject parcel highlighted there and the proposed uses of this is Commerce Center. Most of those uses would fit into that gateway business designation. We can see here just traffic accidents on this portion. There have been some accidents in 23. We have this 1.7 mile stretch here. We considered 11 vehicle accidents, none of which resulted in serious injury. In 22, the same segment had 10 vehicle accidents. This is kind of consistent all on on 60, looking at if you kind of dig into the data of traffic accidents. Most tend to be merging accidents, people getting over, maybe in blind spots. And we, you know, when you're talking about 30,000 trips plus, I mean, honestly, the number of accidents is actually good site distance. I think there's been fairly good access management along Route 60. So some accidents, fortunately, nothing very serious, you know, but of course, that's that's something that we hope doesn't happen, but it's always a possibility. E W Investments, just this this parcel was at one time, the residential commercial, and it was was downzoned, I believe that was in April 2019. Don't have any an expected end user at this point. Again, they're resoning the whole the whole parcel. But the C C does allow for a variety of uses, medical center, restaurants, retail, gas stations. If approved, the applicant would submit a site plan, that would be the next next step. We would get more into details on access circulation. But the proffers that you have in front of you, I will say, and this is a conceptual site plan, that was that was done and the proffers match what's we're showing here. And I will show you, if you look to the right where the Mexican grill is, and I believe you have the, you know, the Brewster's Ice Cream, we have the Sheets. You can see where I have the entrance going, come across from Dorset where the current traffic goes in to go to Sheets and Brewster's Ice Cream, potentially also the Mexican Restaurant. We also have another commercial entrance at Sheets out of that on that on that western portion. But you can see here, and this is reflected in the proffers, internal access. And I think that's sort of the name of the game as we see development on 60 is creating those parallel roads. And if you look to the right, you can see to the very, you know, eastern part of this 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 page, this sort of conceptual plan, you can see you sort of have that, and I'll even go over here to kind of show you, you have this sort of parallel access roads where it would get people off of 60 if they were using some of these services dispersed the traffic. I even kind of did a little, you know, sort of example here of how this, you see the Sheets right there, that blue dot? You can see how this couldn't be, and again, this is reflected in the proffers. There would not be a commercial entrance on this site. They would utilize the existing entrance at Sheets. And potentially, well, potentially, you'd at least have at least two connections to the very north. I just kind of showed how this could also be sort of connected, interconnected as as this develops. But again, let me go back here. Want to note that yellow line, the the property to tax map 4112C, that was rezoned, I think, a year or so ago, some of you might remember. And that that yellow line there, 4112C, that yellow arrow, that is a proffered access point there. So they would be connected to this, you know, parcel to the to the west. And again, connected also to the parcel to the east, the Sheets, and and the parcel to the north with a Brewster's Ice Cream. That yellow line there on the on the 4112C that was rezoned a year ago, they had rezoned, they had proffered an eight foot sort of multi-use sidewalk path, eight foot dedicated right away. And this applicant has done the same. You know, they're not going to build it, but they will dedicate it if that does, that does come to fruition. So we would request that, they had no problem with that, there'd be a buffer there. You can see the red line on the subject parcel, that's the 75 foot setback. So you come from that property line, you go back 75 foot, and that's about where the, you know, the gas pumps are at Sheets. That's about a building setback 75 feet. Development area, kind of the front development area, I'm estimating about 1.1 and 1/2 acres. The the rear would have about 3.6 acres that could potentially be developed developed. And again, I'm very happy with the proffers. The applicant has, you know, Mr. Jones and working with Mr. Nunley has been very open to, you know, putting on paper what, you know, staff would like to see. And again, I just kind of refer back to this sort of circulation plan that I think limits access to 60, parcel would not have would not have direct access and has the vision to create these interparcel connections as this 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 area develops, which we kind of already have going right here, which I think is a good thing and has been some 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 good thought going on with this development here. So having said that, any any other questions for me or you want to go public or?
We need to hear public comment.
You want to hear?
Public comment, of course, yeah.
I think Mr. Jones might have something to say to the applicant.
Dan Jones, 3901 Old River Trail. I'm here representing Ed Nunley, who is the owner of of this property. And be delighted to to answer any questions you might have regarding regarding this this property. Might add that that we submitted the proffers initially. County staff could not have been more professional and absolute delight to work with in terms of further refining these proffers to address hopefully any concerns you might have regarding ingress egress and future development of this this property. Again, it's, as staff indicated, this is shown as as Commerce Center in the Conference of Land Use Plan. And like many, the adjacent parcel, any parcel, when the RC zoning was eliminated, any parcel that did not have commercial use on it automatically went to A10. So that's what happened to the adjacent parcel to the west, which is rezoned, I think, 13 months ago, and the same with this parcel.
Public here. We're gonna have a public here and public comment period now for this. And then we might have some questions for you.
Yeah.
Crosswind, man.
Could they ask them to extend the sidewalk easement across the Sheets gas station property too? Because the developer owns Sheets, also owns Sheets. But on top of that, could could just, could Powton please ask for the sidewalk to become real? Because if the developer is going to be doing construction on Route 6, where they're going to build turn lanes, intersections, and they're going to be building parking lots and stores and restaurants, it would be a lot cheaper if Powton were to proffer the physical sidewalk right then and there. Because if the sidewalks built at the same time that the storm drains and parking lots are built for the new development, it'll be relatively cheap just to build it right then and there and get it done and over with. But if you guys wait for like 10, 20, or 30 years, either the easement could get removed just like that, or it'll it'll be expensive in the future to run to build to to not build the sidewalk at the same time. Because the developers will be digging up utilities and working on Route 60 anyway. You might, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that expensive just to ask them to build the sidewalk from the development, from the mechanic shop to the across the Sheets. Because because I'm currently Flat Rock, it's currently right where the Village of Midlothian is back in the 1960s. If you look at old photographs of the Village of Midlothian, there was really those farms and really nothing around it. Now it's going to turn into like a version, you know, you got to build the sidewalk now. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'm gonna close the public comment period. Crosswind sent out. Board comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Logan, could you put the picture up again of the, we'd show the Sheets and and the proposed parcel? Yeah, that one there. I believe I'm correct in saying that as you approach the Sheets, if you're going west on 60, there's a taper there, a small taper that you could pull over and and get traffic out of the way. I I'm concerned with that entrance generally. I I'm not sure, it's not clear to me what kind of improvements, is that going to be a commercial entrance?
That is a commercial entrance, the one.
It's certainly.
The the one right, you know, to the to the west. And you have.
The one that's shared with Sheets on the on the far, far western end.
That's right. And they did a traffic study on this that when they looked at the Cajun's place, that's just informational, but it VDOT, if you kind of read their comments, it said this is a commercial entrance and it's a shared, meant to be shared. My conversations with our VDOT contacts, just kind of going over this plan, they're fairly pleased with it. Now, you can take a right coming out when it goes from, if you go straight, go to Dorset, and then there's a, there's a lane there.
Right, a taper, there's a slight taper.
Right, and and both.
If that's a commercial entrance, then then someone needs to give me a better definition on what is that. It's it's. It's not even close to what we talked about at Academy and with with Jink Schaefer in terms of a commercial entrance, not even not even close. And the other thing that I would like to ask at least a question about is to use the light there at Sheets and have the main entrance into whatever's developed there to come behind Sheets and make this commercial entrance that you're talking about now to be right turn only. In other words, allow nobody going east on 60 to turn right into that. Let the light control that. So we keep the things flowing there and keep have a safer situation altogether.
Well, we did talk a little bit about that. I think that's something, not to kind of to punt it, but I think it's something we can look at once they have a more defined end user. Would say VDOT, in talking to Mr. Dunagan and Mr. Bodie, kind of lukewarm on that idea of a right end only, I mean, I'm sorry, right out only. And I kind of forget their reasoning for that, but it's it's definitely something that, you know, we can, we can explore once an end user is is found.
Help me with, why why would there be an objection to right turn only?
I think because of the the entrance that's there, I believe that they, you know, at least my my thought is, is that you're going to have a lot of folks that just kind of assume that that is also a way to get in, they're going to get there, they say, oh, you see that, you know, do not enter, and they're going to go up and loop around. It would take some time, I guess, to get used to, but I, and again, I can't remember the exact sort of conversation, but we have talked about it. Just didn't think it was something that they seemed to express that was maybe best option, more more or less, but.
Well, depending on the use and if it is a restaurant of some sort, I'm, you know, at certain certain times of the day, I would see where there might be considerable traffic and that taper might not accommodate traffic getting off of 60, which it means everybody's going to be slowing down and those that aren't paying attention could have difficulty there. And as opposed to letting the light be the controlling factor, let the right hand turn occur there. So I I would really, really appreciate it if you if that would be looked at much more closely.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
That was certain, huh?
You mentioned Cajun's Place, man, that takes me back. That was incredible. Almost brought a tear to my eye, things that I missed.
I was there one time in 1986.
That's awesome. Mr. Kenny and Mr. Powers have firmly planted the the flag on the ground of of making sure that we have proper access and egress on 60 for properties. I just want to make sure that we're continuing that and I just want a little bit more clarification on what Mr. Powers was was trying to to get out of you. Do we, we're definitely using that shared entrance on the western side of Sheets for that property, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. And that would be the only entrance for that property?
I mean, you.
Other than the easement.
Yeah, I think honestly, the majority of people would go to Dorset, the light and go in.
Right.
Especially if you have multiple access.
On the backside of Brewster's.
Right. I I really think that now whether or not we, in consultation with VDOT, at the site plan, make that one way out on the west, I think that's to be determined when we get a traffic study. And if that's, you know, that is something that we will definitely, you know, put forth. And I think, you know, my kind of initial thought was, yes, that does make sense. I just think, and the conversation's somewhat informal at this point with with VDOT over it, it was like, we'll we'll see about that sort of, you know, but their preference. I mean, we we can kind of do what we want there, but that was sort of there in the two folks that we regularly communicate with.
I I can appreciate that, but flow and safety on 60 is is our responsibility. And it it it's not that I'm not sensitive to the developers' issues. They they pale in comparison to the safety and flow on 60, which we're trying to maintain. So I'd ask you just to give that active consideration, please.
I think the greatest thing we could do is those, and that's why they have three proffered, those interparcel connections. And it was a good, when you did the rezoning on the on the Quan property to the west, that was a proffer, you know, was that was that was that connection?
That that would accentuate the need to control that access point because you we don't know what's going to on on those inter interconnected parcels. The light needs to control people getting in there, in my view, and and not not allow a whole lot of in and out from that shared shared entry with Sheets.
I think that can be something very, you know, a very straightforward sort of exploration when we, if we get to the site plan.
Plus, after you get an end user too, you don't know who the end user is yet.
Right. But all good points.
Yep.
Another, another, I don't want to further confuse, but when the property to the west was rezoned 13 months ago, I think it was, there is that an ingress egress point on that property. And and what what he proffered at that point was allowing allowing access from this 6.9 acres into that 3.66 acres. Now, what what we, what this proffer does is allow access both ways. So as this is developed and and the property to the west is developed, there is another ingress egress point on that three that 3.66 acres.
On to 60?
On 60, yes.
To the Quan property? Pardon me?
The Quan property.
The Quan property. Not not on the 6.9 acres, but you you'll have interconnectivity between this, the 6.9 acres and the parcel to the west, which already has an ingress egress point on it.
So we could have a road internal to 60 and not not have people coming in and out of 60, just to move from point A to point B within within those interconnected parcels.
I'm not sure that I follow your 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 point.
Point is that we don't know what's going to be on this property, the one that's that's requested for the rezoning.
Yes.
And we don't know what's going on that property to the west, nor any of the other C C zone parcels that we've negotiated inner interparcel connectivity.
The property to the west has already been, a site plan has been approved for that property.
That may be. I don't, I don't, sitting here right now, what what's going to be put on it?
It's an automotive repair facility.
Okay. We, look, I I'm going to repeat myself again. In my view, that traffic light needs to control to access. In my view, that traffic light needs to control to access to the parcel. And the, the, the shared entrance there with Sheets needs to be right turn only. That's, that's what I would like to see. Uh, but, you know, I'm only one vote up here, so just consider it, please.
No, I, I, I think, uh, I, I see, I see your point. And, and I have watched people use that both for entry and exit. As a matter of fact, I've done it myself when I, when I used the light. But I, I prefer to use the light myself.
I, I avoid that very entrance for the same reason and use the control of the light, safety reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Dennehy.
Uh, based on the, uh, proffers that have been discussed, the, uh, interparcel connectivity, I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning of, uh, oh, twenty-twenty-four dash sixteen twenty-four oh five, uh, agricultural A-ten to Commerce Center, CC.
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
Thought we just did.
Discussion on the motion.
Discussion on the motion. Any discussion?
If you, if you don't mind, Bill, if you'd just allow me this. So when we get a site plan that we really know what in the Dickens is going to go on this parcel, will we have opportunity then via the site plan to control ingress and egress out of that entrance?
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Then I fully support Mr. Dennehy's motion.
Mr. Dennehy.
Hi.
Mr. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Vice Chair Morsett.
Aye.
Chair McClung.
Aye.
Item D was, uh, deferred by the applicant for October twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, so then the next case we have is E, ordinance O twenty-twenty-four eighteen. This is rezoning case twenty-four dash O eight R E Z C, Foundry Golf Club.
There we go, go here. Okay, Foundry Golf Club, to rezone nine-point-four-nine acres from R-two to crossroads. As you can see, this is the, uh, area of the, uh, proposed rezoning. There are several existing facilities on the site. And you can see right here is, to the right is a picture of where, uh, these country inn, uh, would be located. Uh, an inn, uh, kind of a, an older term that was used in a lot of zoning ordinances years ago, country inn. Uh, but it's a little different than a, than a hotel. So here is the, the rough plan, and there is in the packet, you know, there is a, uh, a survey showing meets and bounds of the area to be rezoned, two crossroads. Uh, and you can see here, uh, if you kind of zoom in, I, I won't zoom in here, but to the left, uh, the principal structure is one-twenty-six by thirty-eight. Uh, this would be what they are looking to build now. Um, and they have two other seventy, seventy-six by thirty-two, uh, structures. Uh, that would be potentially, uh, in the future, you know, maybe at a later date, uh, all is in the future, but at a later date, uh, would be constructed for a total of twenty, uh, guest rooms. Um, and you can see parking, there would likely be an expansion of some, uh, parking to accommodate, uh, these twenty, twenty guests, twenty rooms. See Lee Landing, we have two entrances, have a entrance, uh, north and a maintenance entrance that's to the, uh, to the south, uh, on Lee's Landing. Conceptual, this is the proposed three structures, again, not to exceed, uh, uh, twenty rooms. Just a conceptual idea that, you know, that their, their thought is, uh, this is just something to augment their, their members and guest experience. Um, and just a, a kind of an idea with this, what, what the principal structure would look like. Again, R-two zoning, uh, a little unusual, golf court allowable in R-two. You can see the, the suburban, uh, the lots around, uh, here. Uh, again, that is the, the, is essentially the proposed area, Huguenot Trail to the north, to the north. Um, right at Huguenot and Lee's Landing is a crossroad designated in the comp plan. And I show you here in the comp plan, uh, you can see Ag-ten, Single Family Residential, you see the star there where the site is. Uh, you know, the, even though this is not zoned agriculture, the agriculture does, in the comp plan does sort of support, uh, ends and this kind of tourism type activity, uh, as something that would be, that would be, uh, considered to be appropriate. And I'll just go here, the site plan would be required for parking, buffering, access, traffic circulation. We do have a lot of this on that concept plan that we put together. Also doing a site plan review, internally warrant analysis, I have talked to VDOT, uh, this is, uh, Lee's Landing, about a thousand trips. No real data out that suggests any sort of a lot of traffic accidents or anything like that. Uh, but we would get that warrant analysis, um, with IT trip generation. Uh, and here's proffers, uh, pretty straightforward, didn't really do a lot of mending, because I just thought it was kind of pretty much spoke for themselves. Uh, rezoning, uh, would be exclusively country inn, it'd be limited to the guests and their members. Uh, three principal structures, we're not going to exceed twenty rooms. And this should substantially conform to the conceptual plan that you saw, it's in the packet. Guess that being the case, so there, let me go back here. Uh, any, any questions for me on this, or anything?
Any questions? An applicant want to say anything?
Good evening, Board, my name is Tommy Houston, I'm a board member at the Foundry. Uh, if you have any questions for me, certainly happy to answer them. Um, but to give you a little bit more background of, uh, while we're here, this is more of a kind of a master planning for us. And, uh, since COVID, uh, golf has kind of changed. Uh, we've ended up now, we have quite a bit more out-of-town members. So we felt the need, we already have an existing, um, you know, lodge there that's a four-bedroom. And we've, they've kind of planned out with the more out-of-town members we have, that this would be, you know, a good facility for them to be able to overnight stay. It's not going to be a big bourbon on current parking or traffic burly, that, that we really per se. But, got any questions, we would have to answer.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Dennehy.
This is, uh, exclusively for, for members?
Just members and guests.
Is there a, a bigger plan for venue, or is, okay?
No, no venue.
No more questions, I'll open it up for public comment period. For public hearing, O-dash-two oh four dash eighteen, Carl Swineman.
Well, hello, my name is Carl. Um, my only comment is, I thought it was, it was like, you know, a country inn, so they should just put some electric car chargers in for the people to plug in their electric cars when they come in for the night. Like, like, not like an industrial, but like little chargers you buy at Home Depot that just, that charge their car up overnight, like the little small ones that are like this big, like barely a foot wide, that just charge their car up overnight. I have one of those and it would be good, have a bunch of them for the inn, for the people to plug in overnight would be good.
Thank you, sir. George Debs, yeah, I think George left. How's this so hard to read, Richard? Richard.
Hey, guys, this ought to be a break for you. Um, my name is Richard A. Pelletier, former owner of the Palatine Drugstore. I couldn't have any better neighbors than the Foundry on one side and the Mill on the other. I can go to walk to a brewery. I own sixty acres in that triangle directly across the street from where they want to build this. My mailbox had been hit six times on that curb. Um, caught the sheriff's deputy sitting over there in that old, uh, church parking lot, you know, the one that's always closed off. And I asked him, what, what are you doing over here? And he said, well, we had a, a lot of reports of people speeding through here. I don't know, my mailbox has been hit six times. I am directly, directly across the street from this, the entrance that they're going to be working, directly. I've got approximately sixty acres back there. I don't tell anybody about it, because I don't want anybody coming by. But I'm a little concerned that we were jumping ahead a, a little bit here. Now, the crossroads designation, as I understand it, for rezoning, wouldn't that allow for small retail?
That's a U.
Yeah.
Come on.
So these proffered out everything, so, country, yeah.
You want to explain that to us?
Yeah, it would allow other things, but he, as part of the proffers, the country ends up, they only use that there, they're proposing to use. So.
So why, why are we asking for crossroads, uh, designation then, if, uh, there's not going to be anything else?
Well, that was sort of in order to, for, to have an inn, in order to have the overnight accommodations.
Sir, this is public comment period, can you address the board, please? Not, not our.
I'd like to, um, suggest that you guys put this on hold for a while until they choo, choose a little bit better designation. I have the sixty acres, what if I want to put a damn, um, high-rise that overlooks the James River? Right across the street from there and put in an old folks home and put Donald Trump in the penthouse suite? I mean, come on now, guys, we don't, we don't need crossroad designation for, uh, a place that's gonna, it's four thousand five hundred square feet is what they're looking for, with possibility of up to twenty guests, that'd be forty people at most. You do the math on that, four thousand five hundred, divided by forty people? I'd put a nursing home across the street from that. So the crossroads designation is not an appropriate, uh, zoning. Uh, that's, that's all I have for you. Uh, but, um, I don't understand why you would want to overzone ahead, ahead of time. So whenever you write a law, in case you guys haven't noticed, they never undo them. Thanks for your listening.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak? We close.
You got one?
Yes. No, this is just for this, uh, public hearing. Close public comment period for this.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Dennehy.
Like, uh, is there reasonable access for, uh, fire and EMS access? I was trying to look at the path to see what kind of, uh, access they have for that.
I mean, there's a, that's a maintenance access to the south, right? So there's really good access to get to it. And I will just say, I mean, the property is zoned R-two, and it's a, you know, to have a golf course, R-two's a little unusual as well, so, uh, but that's what it ordnance obviously allows, so, uh, you know, this was just sort of the, uh, we thought was the most appropriate to get them to where they wanted to be. And that's why we recommended that, okay, we'll take out all other uses. Uh, you know, there's another way you could do it, we could have gone through and mending the code to add that as a special use. And I, I'm open to either possibility, but this was kind of the way we chose to move it forward, was just to get a partial rezoning of this, this particular site. Now, I don't, it's narrow, it's very clear, this is what it's going to be used for. Uh, so, anyway.
Thank you, Logan. No, sir.
And the, the reason we, uh, went with CR crossroads is the only other places we allow country inn in the county are A-ten agricultural, which you need a conditional use permit for, or R-R rural residential, where you also need a conditional use permit. Um, so we felt, uh, particularly this area is identified as a crossroads. Uh, Millet Fine Creek recently, I think last year, rezoned to crossroads. We felt like that was more in keeping with the area than downzoning to A-ten and then putting a CUP on top of it, or going to a rural residential cattery, uh, with a, a CUP on top. So that was, that was the justification or reasoning, uh, why staff favored crossroads.
Chairman. I'd like to move that we, uh, approve case twenty-four oh eight, uh, R-E-Z for the Foundry Golf Club.
Second. We'll call that.
Mr. Dennehy.
Hi.
Mr. Powers.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Vice Chair Morsett.
Aye.
Chair McClung.
Aye.
Uh, the next two cases, although they're two, uh, separate CUPs relate to the same property. Uh, so these are ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash nineteen, that is for twenty-four oh nine CUP, Jinx Towing. And then ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty, twenty-four ten dash CUP, Schaefer Grading and Landscaping.
All right, I'll just give a. So this is one property, uh, we have a two-point-one acre property. Its current zoning is commercial center, two uses, two conditional use permits that share the same, uh, proposed conditions. So it would actually be two, two separate, uh, motions and votes. Uh, and we've been working, uh, with the applicant, uh, you know, obviously they're up and running. And we've been working staff and with members of the board and the, the property owner and the, and his leeses, uh, to, uh, come to some, uh, some sort of agreement as far as like the principal concern here has always been access. Uh, historically, and I think we've all looked at the maps and, you know, I'm only six months in, but I think we all agree that it's, they, uh, they really appear to, uh, to have really approved the property, you know, during, go with a lot of links to really, uh, make the place look really good. So South Side Anderson Highway, it's zone CC, surrounded by commercial and residential uses. You know, behind it, we do have, I believe it is a private drive that does have residential uses. This is, the, the principal concern with this has been access. I, you know, we, we did a circulation plan here, do we have any more on this? Take that off, let me go. So we can see Schaefer's, which is a contractor's yard fenced in area to the right, uh, everything, you know, they are, uh, coming in, uh, landscaping, grading, uh, they are putting all their equipment in the existing contractor's yard with its fence, so it looks great. Uh, from a traffic standpoint, you know, you have probably, you know, maybe half a dozen or so people coming in in the morning, uh, getting in their trucks and they're going, you know, they're leaving, go to their, their drop site. Uh, to the left, in the, in the, in the blue, you see, see Jinx, which is a heavy truck hauler, which again, both uses do require a CUP in the CC zoning district. They are operating out of that existing building. Uh, here we have a general circulation plan. And I'll just move forward, take this off. So if you're coming to the east, uh, and don't let, you got a lot of, got a lot of purple arrows here, but if you come to the east, you're going to have a right-in, right-out. That is a fifty, at least fifty-foot minimum, uh, width, right-in, right-out, so the big trucks, uh, uh, and even part of Schae, uh, Schaefer's, uh, you know, their trucks that go out would use that. In the middle, uh, we do have a middle, um, uh, uh, you know, access point that will be closed, that will be landscaped, that curbing will be continued. And then on the far east, that would simply be a, uh, if you're coming from, uh, on sixty, if you're going to the west, that would simply be one movement to go in. You could go in, catch that light, that would prove for trucks to, to get in. Otherwise, if that was not there, I'm talking to the, the far east here, um, you'd have to go all the way up to Buckingham, do a U-turn, we don't want that. We've talked to VDOT about this. I think we've even talked, again, talking about the, the entrance to the, to the east, the one-way inn. Maybe realigning that, uh, and making it a full commercial entrance, curb it, make it, you know, look. They were not in favor of that. Uh, and again, the, the, our, our contacts, uh, the idea was they don't really want to advertise, that's just the one way in there. If we kind of align it more with, um, Academy Road, uh, I think the fear is more people, even though this really generates this, this very low traffic volume, but it would give the appearance that, you know, this was a movement that people could make from Academy, we don't really want to give that impression. I thought, you know, I was a little surprised by that, but, you know, it made sense, uh, that they did not want that. Uh, you know, the principal concern here, I'll go through some of the conditions, I think we have a lot of good conditions that are put on it as far as number of trucks that can be out there. Uh, we have a circulation plan, you know, they're going to come into the, to the extreme west, uh, western entrance, they're going to close that middle entrance. You know, no more than three vehicles out front. So I, I think they're doing a great job even before we had these conditions that would, you know, obviously we could enforce of keeping this. obviously we could enforce of keeping the site neat. The, the principal concern, obviously, I think some board, go back, I think some board members have brought it up. I think it's a fair concern is putting a turn lane in here. What we have going is at Old Buckingham, Old Buckingham and sixty, we have a smart scale project, which probably some have seen that would put an acceleration lane that would come up to the, kind of before the, the Barnett's, the old Barnett's. Is that, that's in there right? Barrett's Barnett's. Yeah. It'd be an acceleration lane. That's a long-term project. You know, when, when that gets done, we don't know. We, we, we hope in the next few years. But having acceleration lane that went through the whole sort of, that'd be on the south side of sixty. You take a right, you have an acceleration where you can merge into sixty. That's the long-term plan there. The issue is if you have a merge, you know, have that acceleration lane for people to merge into sixty and then immediately have a turn lane. That's obviously not a real desirable, you know, you know, access point. We have a, you know, acceleration and immediately a turn lane. Bottom line is, we've been working with, VDOT Timmins is the on-call engineer. VDOT uses, if I'm saying that correctly, for the, for the smart scale project. Brett and I talked to him the other day. We feel like if they're out there, going to do some work, we don't know when that's going to happen, that potentially any kind of improvement or a turn lane in here could be part of that overall improvement in the future. So for that rationale, we've, we've, we'll recommend that this be deferred so we can continue to talk to Timmins and the owner and see if we can come to some sort of, you know, some sort of agreement. And even it's just a contribution toward maybe the turn lane or, or Brett, do you want to add anything else to this? I know you're in there. I mean.
Yeah, I, I think you summarized it very well. Just, we left that conversation with Timmins, who's one of our on-call engineers assisting with transportation matters that they, they thought there was definitely some possibility here that, you know, when we're going to be out there with our smart scale project, doing work, they have an entrance there that would be very close to it. So rather than them spending money into a turn lane and then we come in later and, and repave over half of it, maybe we could work together on that. But also that if you have acceleration lane and turn lane too close together, that can create a conflict point. So we all agreed there were some real opportunities there to plan these projects so they work in harmony and don't conflict with one another. But that wasn't something we were going to be able to decide, you know, in, in one afternoon meeting. And, and we need to have, sit down, have VDOT in the room as well and the property owner and talk through it. But we think there's a real opportunity there. We just want to take a little more time to explore it before we recommend approval.
And I will, you know, we did look at the traffic data and, you know, I, I know we had talked about it with the five-year look back. There have been a couple of rear ends there in front of that area. You know, people tend to slow down at the light. You know, VDOT, my conversations concur that, you know, from a, from a accident wise, but we are talking about large trucks going out, you know, the, the large tow truck. But it, it, it really is pretty safe. It has been, at least historically, with a couple rear ends. And, you know, I think I looked at five years. So the overall usage, what they're proposing, you know, is, is fairly, you know, I don't think they're anywhere near what we, the magic number we usually use is fifty trips a day. And I don't think either use are going to trip fifty a day. I mean, maybe half that would probably be more realistic. I've even gone by there and kind of watched and you just don't, don't see a lot of trips going in and out of there. So. But still, I, I do think that the, the idea to explore how this can be improved in conjunction with the smart scale and have a plan going forward, whether it's implemented in three or four years or whenever that may come, is, is definitely a worthy conversation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kenny. I need to do public hearing, public comment first.
Is the applicant here?
No. Is applicant here, Ligon?
No, I don't think he was going to come. I knew we were still kind of looking at things, so I believe he's not here.
I'm open up public comment period for O dash two oh four dash nineteen. Carl Swineman.
Could they ask the developer to include a sidewalk easement like the one that is going to show up in front of the sheets? Like along the sheets in that development there, like a future easement for a sidewalk because of the fact that that piece of land is sits between Old Buckingham Road and Buckingham. And that would probably be the side, the village sidewalks, if they ever did start going down Route sixty, would probably, would probably, they'd probably run across that property heading east down Route sixty.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, my name's Cindy Boot. I live at forty three forty three Bridge Road. Two things. I want you to be very, very careful with how you do the ins and outs of the traffic. Because that area there where Old Buckingham comes out on sixty is right next to that. And cars fly up that hill and you have the people coming over from across the road from Al's. And that little turn lane, that's, that's a mess and it's a dangerous place. And it scares me, the thought that you're going to have large trucks who take a while to gear up and get going while you got cars coming up over that hill. It's kind of a blind area. I would suggest that the, the large trucks, they enter sixty on the eastern end of that property, not on the western end of that property. So you've got more distance between them and more time for the trucks to speed up, maybe even a, an access lane if they can do one off of that property. The other thing that concerns me is that these are being done with conditional use permits. And I'm a victim of a conditional use permit. Started out with a landscaping business. One seven ton truck and a little tractor and a trailer. And over the, over a time, we had a, somebody who would not follow the conditional use permits and what the county and the planning office did. Every time he violated, the next time the conditional use permit came up, they just wrote his violations into the new permit. And it finally got so large that they grandfathered the CUP because they couldn't control the man. And what originally started out with a little shed, a tractor, little medium-sized tractor, one trailer and a seven-ton truck is now a construction, excavation, landscaping business that has log haulers, it has gravel hauling trucks, it has bulldozers, it has large backhoes. Be careful what you put under CUP because it may start out with just a few trucks or it may start out with just one little tractor. But the man's in there to make money. The man's in there for business and it's going to grow. And unless you've got a planning department that's strong enough to enforce a CUP, you should not pass them. Right now, this man was not supposed to be able to have another building on his property. He built a twenty, a thirty by fifty foot metal building and called it his personal gymnasium. And he stood in front of the board of supervisors and says, they asked him, are you going to use it for a maintenance shed? Oh, of course I am. They passed it anyway. Now, when I'm in my garden, I have to listen to their compressor and their repair shop. I've been screwed by this county. Don't screw the neighbors around this business thinking, oh, this person's good and it's going to stay what it is. It's not. Don't screw another Palton resident like this county screwed me.
Thank you, ma'am. Close public comment period. Board comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mr. Kenny.
So I do have to commend Jinx and Shafers, like Ligon said, on the job they've done improving the property. And one of the reasons why I'm going to ask for a deferral is to some of Brett's points is, and, and Robert and I have, have looked at this and we've got some serious concerns about trucks going in and out of there and the safety they pose as a public. In addition, I'm hoping with regard to the smart scale project, some very good points were brought up during the town hall. People were concerned the acceleration lane isn't long enough. Because if you got to go in that acceleration lane from thirteen on to sixty to get over to Academy to make a U-turn to go the other way, because you're only going to be able to go right once it's done, there won't be enough time for that. And I drove it the other day and I don't think there'd be enough time for that. So I, I think we need to look at making the acceleration lane with the smart scale project a little longer and then tie that into Jinx and Shaffer and, and make a turn lane there. I have personally witnessed the trucks going from Academy across sixty, even though there's a light there. The size of the wrecker they're pulling blocks both lanes of sixty. And to the lady's point, if you're coming up over the hill, people don't slow down for the light. I mean, they come up over that hill flying and all it takes is one rear end and one of those big trucks and lights out. So I would like to make a motion regarding. Let me get the right page here. Yes, there we go. Twenty four dash oh nine and twenty four dash ten, the CUPs for Jinx Towing and Shafers Grading, that we defer that for thirty days.
Second.
Do we need to do this separately, Kelly? Or is it, we just combine in the two?
I thought we were having one public hearing, but I think you have two sign-in sheets. So if you have other speakers, probably do it separately.
I do have one speaker for the.
So do them separately, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote.
Yeah, sure.
Do we have time for just a little bit more discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I support Mr. Kenny a hundred percent. I, I'm really concerned with the safety here. And I've been observing the last board for a bigger part of three and a half, four years. And I think smart scale and intersection improvements has been discussed for over those three or four years. And we've, I've not seen any, any progress relative to that. Smart scale to me is, is a wonderful opportunity, but in the interim, we have a safety issue. And so I, I can't, I don't think we can sit here and, and be sure that we're going to have smart scale approval. Do we?
No, no, we won't find out yet. We're still waiting.
So, and, and to Ligon's point about acceleration and de-acceleration lanes, we, we deal with those all the time. Every time you get on two eighty-eight, you, 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 you do both things. People are slowing down, people are speeding up and you, you coordinate that. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't really buy that. I think that there needs to be a mechanism whereby the, the traffic going east has a chance to get off of, off of sixty and slow down, especially in light of the types of vehicles. One other thing I might mention is, is putting mailboxes square on sixty. There's two of them sitting out there serving Jinx and Shaffer. I can't imagine the little white postal truck sitting there as people bearing down at sixty miles an hour on a, on a postal truck that stopped. So I think we need to talk to the postmaster and maybe encourage the, those, those mailboxes to be moved. The last thing I would say is the entrance that's accommodating the ingress only. Let me ask this as a question, Ligon. Is, is that slated for considerable improvement? It's, it's pretty ragged right now. I mean.
I have to look at the proffers again, but I, I, I believe Mr. Knuckles is, is planning on repaving all of that. And I have to double check with, with that, but I'll, I'll make sure about plan repaving that. And again, curbing, taking that landscape all the way where that middle entrance is, would, would close that. You know, it, it put a barrier there, but we all sort of agree with that really. I mean, if there was an accident, so I, I just think someone hit that barrier could get back into the road. I mean, I, I just think it makes sense just to curb it all the way down.
Okay. And one other question, Brett, maybe you could shed some light on this. Turn lane to accommodate this, how long would it be? I mean, what are we talking about?
The current VDOT spec is two hundred by two hundreds. You have two hundred full storage, full width turn lane and then a two hundred foot tapered.
We, we could, we could adjust that. We're not anticipating a huge amount of traffic in and out of there. We just want to have forty-foot trailers and, and dump trucks a chance to get off the road so that people don't, don't have accidents behind them. So it wouldn't have to be that big, would it?
No, no, that's, that's their full, their full spec one, but then you adjust them per the actual project and what's available there. So that's part of what we can discuss with VDOT and Timmins and the applicant between now and then.
Hundred feet, hundred and fifty foot, just to get those big vehicles off of, off the road. So I, I support deferring. I said, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, but one other question, Brett. So we, we were awarded grant money for this project that we wouldn't have to wait on VDOT. We could start it ourselves at a much quicker pace.
You're correct. And we have, we have a proposal from Timmins to assist us with engineering that as a local, locally administered project to start some of that construction. We've sent that draft contract to VDOT to review because they'd still be a partner on that project. So as soon as we have those comments back from VDOT, we'll put that on the board agenda to approve. But yeah, we, as you said, we've got five million in grant funding sitting there. We'd like to get started on some of that sooner than later.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
To, to what end? I mean, what, what, what are you, what are you thinking about doing with Timmins Engineering? What, I mean, what are you, what are you talking about? Turn lane?
The, so we've got the, the smart scale improvements, which I, I think are eight million or so in total. So we're going after smart scale to get all of that, the rest of the money to finish it out. But meanwhile, we have five million dollars in CVTA money that was awarded for this. So rather than waiting to get the full eight to start anything, let's start doing some pieces of that smart scale project and build it out. Then when that state money hopefully comes in, we've already started some of that work.
That, I understand. To, to my point then, what specifically would spending that money in the interim do to improve the safety and give access or give, give turn lanes, give it an opportunity for those vehicles to get off the road?
Yeah. So we think one, one of the first things that we would want to do is that acceleration lane probably off of thirteen, which would run it very close to this property. So that's, that's why we're having this discussion is, is there an opportunity then? Correct. To extend it further or to have that turn lane join it, or if there's going to be distance, make sure they're, they're spaced far enough apart. But there could be a possibility to just keep running it through to become a turn lane.
If we extend the acceleration lane, what do we do about it? I mean, Jinx owns that property. Mr. Knuckles owns that property. What, what are we, what are we going to do there?
There, there's quite a bit of right of way that we would look at that and see if a right-of-way acquisition is needed. But the right-of-way there along sixty is, it's fairly good as I recall. So I'm not sure we would have to go into their private property at all. We could likely do it within the VDOT right-of-way that's existing.
Okay. And the thirty days will give you and VDOT and Timmins time to affirm something up?
I think so. I mean, we'll definitely be able to pull a meeting together with them and I think with that, we'll find out very quickly. And I was at a, a one-day discussion or a longer discussion, but that will give us enough time to, to know.
If we, if we don't have it, I mean, we could request, I mean, I don't know if staff would just say, we, we could maybe go back to November. I don't know how easy that would be if we haven't got a clear answer by October, you know. I guess it would be a possibility to, to push her back to, to November, potentially.
Days.
The hundred days is for the planning commission.
Okay. So we can defer to it for infinity.
You have one year to act on it.
Oh, okay. That works.
Yeah. I mean, so my thoughts, maybe staff could just kind of come and say, hey, look, we're ready to move this forward. I know time is of the essence. So we would want to move forward as fast as we could, but it, it might not be, you know, October, but.
You want else? We got a motion and a second.
Mr. Navi.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Vice Chair Morset.
Aye.
Chair McClung.
Aye.
All right. That brings us to our last public hearing of the evening. This is zoning ordinance amendment of twenty twenty four.
Apparently there, the public hearings were signed up separately, so we do need to go.
Okay, so we need to hold that on.
In the future, since the, since the first, since the data center was referred, deferred and these are being deferred, we'll just do them as a single public hearing and a single sign-off sheet in the future.
So do I go ahead with this one?
We do have to do Jinx next. I'm sorry, Shafers.
Okay.
Shafers.
I'm open up public comment period for Shafers two oh, two four dash twenty. Carl Swineman.
I missed, I did, I missed, I missedicked this for something, but I did, I did think of, run across something. The five million dollars in CBT money, I think that might be used for, might be able to use the VDOT revenue sharing thing. Where they have like a, the revenue sharing program where they could take the five. the, the revenue sharing program where they could take the five million, match it to make it ten million. I think it opens in October. The, the revenue sharing program, I think it opens in October. I remember reading something about it.
Thanks, sir.
Michelle Stinet-Pautin, I just have a question. So this is really an example of how we approve blind applications. I was part of the Jinx grand opening and the Schaefer's grand opening where they had the big fire trucks, and they had the monster trucks, and they didn't have any problems going in and out. Why would the county allow them to spend that amount of money to upgrade those two structures? And then now all of a sudden have, we're having this battle when they've put, they've done the work already. They should be, be able to operate their, you knew, you should have known what that business was going to be before you even approved the application. They've done a phenomenal job redoing that area. Multiple thousands of people have commented on social media. They have done, they are impressive. Why are they, why are we even here? Like, this was, this, this should have been upfront with the application, just an example of we, we put blind people out on Route sixty and tell them to cross the road and good luck. You, we, there should be disclosure in these applications. There should be, there should be plans. There should be details. Y'all are being asked to approve things on faith and a gentleman's handshake. And really, that's not fair to y'all. I mean, there's no transparency at all in these applications. These people have done the work. They don't have, how many, how many big tow trucks do you, do we need a day? I mean, maybe one or two would go out a day. There's been no problems getting trucks in. The, you know, the traffic comes from Huguenot Academy, Blessed Sacrament, is down Academy Road. That's where this smart improvement project, that's where we're going to have problems. Kids are going to come out of Route thirteen. They're going to have to cross all the way over to get to the light to be able to get to school, along with the school buses, along with, you know, one or two tow trucks going in with a signal on is, is not that big of a deal. It's not like they're running accident service. These are, this is for large, these are school buses or tractor trailers, big equipment, stuff like that. It's not like they're going to be in and out of there all day long like a regular tow service answering to Virginia State Police for accidents. But to have them, to have them holding off for this regulation six months after they finished pouring money into this county is wrong. I mean, it's just plain, it's wrong. You know, there needs to be more disclosure on the application process to do the CUPs. That should all be upfront. I mean, people know what they're going to bring to this county when they put in these applications. They just don't want you to know what it is. So they're asking you to approve their application because I said so. Well, we all know everybody's a liar. Nobody is as true as they used to be. And a gentleman's handshake means nothing. If it's not contractual, it's not, it doesn't have to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you like to speak?
Lorraine Jones. I too, citizen, been here about thirty-three years. When you're looking at this area of Route sixty, you have a lot of things to be concerned with. You have Schaefer's, you have Jinx, then you have the old Barnett's building who's now is going to be Mink Motors. But in between the old Barnett's building and Jinx is a private driveway that leads back to houses. You're talking about mailboxes, literally there are three, because there was one in front of Barnett's unless Minks, Mink is going to put his someplace else. So when you're talking about putting a, an acceleration lane and a deceleration lane, you've got to figure and run, if you're going to run those two together, you have to take into consideration that neighborhood behind there who enters and exits between those two businesses. So there's a lot to be considered there. But I agree with her. This man, Jinx and Schaefer's has put a hell of a lot of money into making these buildings look top-notch. And now you're questioning and asking them to put more money out when it should have been addressed beforehand. If they're bringing this kind of equipment in, can these driveways handle it before they dumped all this money into these businesses? You're really not doing them very fairly, in my opinion. But everyone has one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don Rismar, thirty-five, twenty-three, Richard Run.
Is this for the
It is for the hearings, yes, yeah. I, I just wanted to comment on the XL D cell. The, the tapers in a turn lane and acceleration, deceleration turn lane probably would not apply in this case because the distance between Old Buckingham and the traffic signal at Academy Road, even if you shorten those merge areas, you're still not going to have enough room for the right in, right out, for the private roadway, and for Barnett's, and for Jinx. So the, the only logical way of doing that is a, essentially a twelve-foot full-length turn lane. And in my opinion, as an engineer that works on traffic studies sometimes, you would not want that, that traffic that's trying to merge into Route sixty eastbound conflicting with the left turns at the traffic signal. If it's a permissive left, if it's a protected left, it wouldn't be an issue because they wouldn't be able to make the left across opposing traffic. But if it's a permissive left, you would have the situation we have with the blinking yellow at Jude's Ferry, right? Where there's people that are going eastbound and going westbound, and, you know, they have to make that decision, whether it's safe, whether there's a gap. So as long as it's a protected left turn at the traffic signal, you could easily make sure Jinx Towing provides adequate right-of-way and possibly a little bit of a donation towards the interim highway safety improvement prior to the Smart Scale project, to just have a, a full lane for people coming off Old Buckingham to accelerate and merge into traffic. Just my opinion.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Connie Harris. I live at fourteen seventy Huguenot Trail. A very, to, to add to what you're discussing now, and I don't know how you can get VDOT to do it, because I've been trying to get VDOT to lower the speed and land on seven eleven for years and years and years. But I think that at Plainview, which is, I've lived in Powhatan all my life, at Plainview and at Dorset, we should, the speed limit should be forty-five miles an hour through that, but those two major intersections in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna close the public comment period for this case. I get a motion for this one? We defer both, correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
I'd like to make a motion to defer twenty-four dash ten CUP for Schaefer's Grading and Landscaping for thirty days.
Second.
Mr. Nadi. Sorry.
Roll call, bud.
Mr. Nadi.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Vice Chair Morissette.
Aye.
Chair McClung.
Aye.
All right. So that brings us to our final public hearing of the evening, oh, twenty-two four dash twenty-one. This is zoning ordinance amendment twenty-four dash twelve to permit accessory dwelling units in the RR district detached.
I don't have a lot to add to this. This was something that was brought to my attention several months ago in the RR zoning district, which is a minimum of ten acres. Some, just like the, the A ten. Currently, the, by permitted use is a attached or an apartment dwelling, an attached accessory. I'm not sure exact terminology, but it has to be a, basically an apartment inside of the house, attached to the house. And the question was posed, would it, would, would the county, would the board, planning commission, et cetera, would be interested in adding this, a standalone accessory dwelling, fifty percent of the principal dwelling size, to add that as an, also a permitted use in RR? Now, we'll say there are RR lots that some do not meet the ten acres, like there are A ten lots that don't meet the ten acres. In this case, we would still allow this as a, as a permitted, permitted use. Again, fifty percent, I did, this was unanimously approved by the, by the board. I do believe that the, you know, the accessory dwelling units, we talk a lot about housing availability, opportunities. I do believe, especially in rural areas, that they work very well. Most of the time, it's going to be a family member. You know, you, there was a comment that was, wanted to play a commission by a citizen, which I believe is here tonight. And if that person wants to sort of give their comments, I thought it was very eloquent, talking about how this is really, I think, the essence of providing housing options in rural areas through the accessory dwelling. When most of the time, you're going to be on larger lots, where a, you know, two thousand square foot principal house, you have a thousand square foot accessory dwelling detached. And again, most of the time, it's probably going to be a relative situation. So I do believe it is, is a good situation. And simply adding it, letting it be detached as opposed to attached or inside the unit, you know, achieves the same end in helping with this, you know, providing kind of niche housing in the county. So I have too much more to add to that, but any other questions for me or?
I need to do public comment period.
Yeah, okay.
For this public hearing. I'm open up public comment period for public hearing oh dash two oh four dash twenty-one, countywide zoning amendment. Billy Melton, he's not here. Bill Cox, not here. Connie Harris.
I'm a little confused about the signup sheets for speakers because I've never, I've never signed up to speak before. And I, and I signed the wrong sheet. But I would, I would thank you that I did not realize that at the end of the comment period, if you had not signed up, that you, if you, Mr. Chairman, would say, is anyone else who wishes to speak, which you did say in some instances, but on the data center, you did not. And, and that's when I wanted to speak. But I'll be back in October to speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't sign up for this one, but I did sign up for the second general public comment. Is that after this?
It's coming up, yes.
Well, just pertaining to this one.
Yep.
What concerns me is the verbiage that says it's can, it can, that the size is limited to half the size of the main dwelling. I think that it should be limited to a particular square footage because there are massive houses here on ten acres or more. And a secondary dwelling could end up being twenty-five hundred square feet or more. So I really think that the size of this unattached dwelling should be defined, not left at a half, because I had a neighbor who built a full-scale house next to his full-scale house and attached it with a breezeway and calls that an attached accessory dwelling for a family member. And there were two full-size houses. So you really need to be specific with this. And the other question I have, if you're going to allow a detached accessory dwelling, is it going, are you going to allow it to be used as rental property? Because I have a friend, they have a second house on their property when they bought it, but the county says they can't rent it. So you need to define whether this can be rented or purchased. And you also need to decide whether or not this unattached accessory dwelling could be a trailer, because there may be a family member who's old, who's not going to live but maybe another five years, and they may just want to pull a trailer in there for five years and then haul it away. So I think you need some more definition in this. It's too general, it's too broad, and there are too many people who will take advantage of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I think that the house should, I think the house should be allowed to be fifty or sixty percent the size of an original dwelling, because I think that restricting the size of a house, I kind of think it's more about how many people are living in it versus actually the, the size of the house. My biggest question would be like, how many people, how many unrelated people would be living in the house? As long as it's like, if it's say someone's grandma or grandpa or like aunt and uncle, and they're living in a house that's built next to an existing one, that, that to me would be okay. But I would be worried about trailers and modular homes, because we have somebody in our neighborhood who went wild with, who has like six or eight, they live on like a quarter, a half acre, and they have like six metal buildings on their property, and they have like three trailers and like all these people and stuff living in it. And I think that, that the ha, the rule, I think that rule of just have, of having a house next to an existing house, I think it's a great way to increase the housing supply in the county. I think it, I think it's a good way to increase the housing supply. And in fact, these are on large lots. It wouldn't be a big deal, as long as it's not like ten different people living in. But if it's just like regular, it wouldn't be, I think it'd be a great idea.
Thanks, sir.
Don Rismar, thirty-five, twenty-three, Richard Run. I did make a comment on this case before the planning commission heard it, so I just wanted to share a few thoughts, support the gun's recommendation. One of the challenges facing Powhatan County is affordable housing, and that sparked my interest with the accessory dwelling units. So what I learned was that the other residential districts in the county all allow ADUs. It was just the RR district that does not allow it. And so I looked into that further, and it seemed like there was no specific reason not to allow it in RR. Secondly, affordable housing, by definition, would work well with accessory dwelling units because it's not limited to family. You would have a shared driveway. You would not have any land costs to build an accessory dwelling unit. And then if it was multi-generational living, which is what the Urban Land Institute study that I sent the staff to take a look at spoke about, it allows you to have the assistance to care for the elderly, for seniors, your parents, somebody like that could live in the ADU. Also, if you have a younger child, which we, I actually have a neighbor in my neighborhood who approached me about this, about their daughter trying to find an affordable home in the county, which is another reason to spark my interest, because he would then potentially be allowed to build an accessory dwelling in it. It would be allowed to be up to fifty percent of the square footage of his primary home, and his daughter would have a little bit of privacy. So, but at the same time, shared kitchen, cook meals, babysitting, if you're pursuing further education as a younger person who wants to live in Powhatan County, that would work as well. And the, the real trick to this is it's not high-density residential. I think that's one of the challenges this board has really been faced with really early, is how do we have Powhatan stay rural and also provide solutions for the citizens? So to me, this was a way to incrementally move the needle forward, to have affordable housing, where you would also have the family support around you if it is multi-generational living. Or if it's not, to be able to accommodate somebody who maybe just needs to step up and needs somewhere affordable to live in Powhatan County that's not high-density residential apartment complexes. It's in the woods, in somebody's backyard, potentially. So in my eye, I had a very optimistic view of this. I support Lagon's recommendation, and I, you know, he kind of called me out, so I figured I'd say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Close public comment period for this hearing. More comments?
If I can address two of the questions, one, whether they would be for sale or rental, because it is on the same piece of property, would either be a situation as described where a family member's in it or, or a rental. If you were to sell it, then you're going to have to divide the property, and it would just be its own separate house if somebody had that much acreage. And then on mobile homes or trailers. And then on mobile homes or trailers, RR zoning, manufactured homes or mobile homes require a conditional use permit, so you wouldn't be able to do one of those by right. It would have to be a stick-built or modular home as otherwise permitted there. But we've, we've done these in A-10 quite a bit, and I think we amended the ordinance once, maybe even twice to enable them even more, and it's worked well for us. And so far, seeing them in A-10 areas, haven't found issues with people doing these.
Thank you, Brett. I'd like to make a motion to approve oh-2024-21.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Nadi.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Vice Chair Morissette.
Aye.
Chair McCrone.
Aye.
Open up our last public comment period, Carl Schwendeman.
Two quick comments. Could they ask Timmons to do a feasibility study of, of seeing what, how possible it would be to extend Old Buckingham Road to Academy Road and just have Old Buckingham Road share the same stoplight as Academy and just avoid all that mess at that intersection? Just have Old Buckingham go straight to Academy and intersect with one another at, at the, just share the same stoplight? Also, about the, about the data center, is the tax, is that thing on the taxes for the data center, is actually going to be its own public meeting or is that going to be just a thing they're going to propose? Because I think that the data center, I think Powhatan should go for top dollar in terms of collecting tax revenue from the data center. The fact that the data, the fact that we may only just get one, we're only going to probably get one data center or none at all. And I think that, I think Powhatan should go for 45 cents or 50 or 60 cents because we could use the difference in that revenue to put millions into our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cindy Booton? Cindy Booton? Connie Harris is next.
I also wanted to thank the guy who's putting, putting in the, who did all the work on the buildings to make that site where the conditional use permits were deferred. I don't want to give him an attaboy because it's really pretty what he's done. My main reason for wanting to comment here is with the data center, and I'm Cindy Booton, 4343 Bridge Road. With the data, just a little background, I'm a retired electrical project engineer. And I learned from years of experience that if you don't take enough time in the design phase, you have a real hard time with implementation. And I really think it's a mistake to only defer that hearing for one month. We should wait till we get the results from state. There's no reason to rush that. If these guys want a data center, they can wait three months, they can wait six months, they can wait a year. But Powhatan needs to make sure we do this right because we're opening the door to more of this. And as a rural county, and I've lived here 35 years, and a backward county, particularly when it comes to manage and development, Powhatan needs to do more homework. This is a big thing, and if you open the door once, then the whole carnival's coming in. And I'm just asking you, delay the next hearing on that until after we get the report from the state of Virginia and make sure that we've done homework on water, sewage, electricity, what it's going to do to the residents. And it's no kidding, no joke, people come out here to live in peace and quiet. A bunch of diesel generators going online and a power outage. It's bad enough you're panicked without your own power, but to have to listen to that noise, it's, it's a sin to do that to somebody who came out here to live in peace and quiet. Your Powhatan needs the money, but we need to get the money the right way. We don't know, you need to sell our soul before the cake's baked. Please do your homework. Please defer the vote on this until after the state has its done, has its report done and do the homework. Answer all the questions that came from the audience because if you haven't noticed, you've got a smart audience. They came here for a reason, peace and quiet, and they're going to find you tooth and nail to the death for it. So get it right or don't do it.
Connie Harris is gone, correct? I'm going to close our last public comment period. County Minister of Comments?
We do have some upcoming events I wanted to share with everybody. One, tomorrow, the Company One groundbreaking, so a long-awaited expansion and improvement to our Company One Fire Station. That'll be tomorrow at 1:00 PM at, of course, Company One here just down the street. Then also tomorrow evening, if you've never been inside Ice Den, Powhatan's new and only ice rink, they're having an open house tomorrow night, 5:30 to 7:30. That's in Oak Bridge, and they'll be welcoming the Polarmites, who are the region's first and only seven-and-under youth hockey league. So again, out in the Oak Bridge Business Park, need to check out that Ice Den. Then Thursday in the Village at the Admin Building, we're doing a new series where we host some food trucks in the Village to get people out. So this Thursday from 11:00 to 1:00, we'll be having Double D's Barbecue Shack food truck in the Admin Building parking lot. So that's open to everyone to come out. Then Fortune Auto, also in the Oak Bridge Business Park, they're a neat business in the county, a lot of people probably aren't aware of, but they design and manufacture high-end racing suspension for cars. They're sold all over the world, championships all over the world with technology that's designed and made right here in Powhatan. They're going to have their open house Sunday, September 29th, 12 to 5, in the Oak Bridge Business Park. So again, an opportunity to get in and look at the neat, unique, high-end manufacturing business that's quietly doing business here in the county. And then lastly, Festival of the Grape, Saturday, October 5th, from 11:00 to 6:00. That's the 21st Festival of the Grape. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brett. Any board comments? Here none. Callie, you want to take us in the?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to convene and close a meeting for the following purposes. Discussion, consideration, assignment, appointment, promotion to motion, salaries, performance of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body concerning Board of Supervisors Code of Ethics and Standard of Conduct complaints. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body concerning litigation involving Powhatan, including but not limited to Lund, Beckner, Good, and Tri-Hope cases. In consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body for legal advice regarding the aforesaid matters. Whereas such discussions may occur in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.237, 11A, 1, 7, and 8. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforesaid matters in closed meeting, need that in the form of a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Roll call. Do they roll call?
No, just coming out, we do.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reconvening in open meeting, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Board members, to the best of your knowledge, were one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Denadi.
Aye.
Ms. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. McCrone.
Aye.
Mr. Powers. Mr. Kenny.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.